Others needs above ours. And thank you so much for recognizing our staff. It was important for these gentlemen to hear this and what our community expects from them. They've heard it from us, they've heard it from the chief, and now they're hearing it from city council, the council chair, and those that are in attendance. So more to come. Very excited to welcome these three gentlemen. Eddie Zar's kind of like, I don't know, he could be chief tomorrow, I think, from what I'm hearing. Even though he's of the Dearborn Zars, we welcome him here in Dearborn Heights. And he's, everybody's waving at him and they're so excited to see him in the community. So you guys have your work cut out for you to live up to Eddie here. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Chief. Okay, next item on our agenda is agenda approval. Council Chair, Councilman Bedun. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda of the regular meeting of June 13, 2023, with the clarification that item seven dash B is request for bids as submitted.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Bedun, seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Now, you mentioned something about, can you, I've got just a quick question. Can you clarify, you said something about seven B, what about it?
On the agenda, Council Chair. I know, but you said seven B is request for bids.
Oh, that's it.
And submitted.
Okay, I thought there was something.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought there was a change. Okay.
Okay, item six four is about a court order cleanup on Tulane. And it's in the amount of $3,250, about $750.
That's a fund transfer.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
I have to wait till we get to that one?
Fund transfers.
Okay, all right.
We're just doing the agenda.
And then I've got two others, but I'll wait till we get there. Okay, thanks, guys.
Okay. Any other discussion items?
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman?
I was gonna try to walk on something tonight, but I'm gonna wait. It's my resolution for the bonuses for the employees. I want to move some money to a restricted account out of our ARPA money. But I'll put it on the agenda for next week and I'll see how easy it is. Everyone was saying how easy it is to amend the budget, so we'll see how easy it is next week, next meeting.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Any other discussions on there? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
For the record, Councilman Constant is here.
Okay, you got it. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Council Chair. Councilman? I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 23, 2023 as submitted.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item four B, minutes from the regular meeting of May 23, 2023.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the regular meeting of May 23, 2023 as submitted.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad and seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda, lots of minutes, lots of special meetings, but let's go with minutes from the special meeting of June 6, 2023. Council Chair. Councilman Bedun. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the special meeting of June 6, 2023 as submitted.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun and seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is public hearings and comment on agenda items only. If anybody would like to speak on agenda items only, you will have two minutes. Please state your names, city and street.
Good evening, Hassan Bazey, Sheehan, Dearborn Heights.
Wait, I'm sorry, one second, Hassan.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanna, number seven A, DPW Director Conrad, about the bid for the A and B Operator Service. I've seen the number here, about 49,200, that's for three years contract, I believe. I don't know if you guys, you are aware of that?
I can pull it up for you.
Okay.
Yes, it's through 2025.
Okay, well, this has just came to my attention here, I was going through the agenda. From the line of the work I do, I think this is an excessive number for 49,200. I just wanna be a little bit conservative. I tell you, this number should be slashed in half, maybe less too. So I think you should consider this. It's too much money for this bid and for this kind of service, and that's what we do in our daily life. So I can tell you, I mean, average year costs probably about $5,000. So if you're talking three years, that's $15,000, so that's too much money. I think you guys should reconsider this.
Well, thank you for bringing it up. It's an interesting thing that you do. I have here my notes to bring that up. I didn't know the card, but I knew it didn't sound right.
You know, this is what we do for a living, and this is, we deal with this every single day. And that's a very excessive number for this, so please take this into consideration.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on agenda items only? You'll have two minutes, please. Hello?
Hello, my name is Amr Fomadi, I'm representing Katrina Mia, the food truck. I just want to say that we're forever grateful for the opportunity we've been given these past six months. Business has been great. We're an authentic Mexican food truck. We're the first to serve beer that's halal in all of Michigan. So we're getting a lot of great feedback from the community. And we're so thankful and really excited to continue moving forward with the city of Dearborn Heights. And I just wanted to come up here just to thank you guys and show you guys how grateful we are to be in this community. And we've been in business for three years, and this has honestly been the best six months we've had here. And we just wanna keep better serving the community, and if you guys had any suggestions, we'd like to hear them, so.
I have a suggestion. I've eaten there and my son-in-law's eat there on a regular basis and bring food home for us. Can you make it not taste as good? Because I'm up probably about 10 pounds from eating there. For those that have not tried it, I gotta tell you, you're missing out. It is really, really, really good, and it's authentic. And I know somebody in there was speaking Spanish, I have no idea what they were saying, but obviously it makes them more of an expert in the field. But it was absolutely delicious.
What are your hours?
Monday through Saturday, 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Location?
645 North Telegraph Road, right outside the brand new Valero, the chill box.
Yeah, it's at Haas and Telegraph, very close from the McDonald's.
Right here, yeah, literally like.
And your mom, your mom is behind all the great cooking, right?
She's my aunt.
Your aunt.
Yeah, yeah.
By the way, guys, the food is absolutely amazing, so congratulations to you guys. You know what, all of these guys are samples?
We will, no, whenever you guys want, you guys come by, you can buy.
For everybody, not for us.
Yeah, if anybody wants, come by right after, we're still at the 10:00 PM.
Yeah, so what I really, really like about it is, like I said, well, I don't know if I'm an expert on the Mexican or Spanish food, I get it. But you could just tell it's authentic. It's not something that somebody's just trying to make something that's not their deal. This is, you've been there? The real deal, yeah, she's running it and it's, I'm sorry? Oh, okay, it's really good, really good, so thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Any other, any other public comments on agenda items only? On up. Our former corporation counselor.
Yeah, Gary Miyake, oh, I'm sorry. Gary Miyake, Plainfield Street. Item two A, I'm encouraged that we have new officers, we need officers, we are at a real deficit. But I'm very concerned about whether or not we are actually following Act 78, whether or not we are following civil service or.
I'm gonna raise an objection to any legal, any legal issues.
You have no basis to cut me off.
What you want, but please don't.
I can comment on the law if I want to. Whenever I want to.
You can object to it, but please don't give legal advice.
You can make your own statement afterward, you have no basis. Your chair is the one who basically runs the meeting.
Okay, one second, Gary, one second. So it's a public comment. At this point, obviously he's speaking as a public, just a resident, okay? So he'll be allowed to speak, but I agree with Roger that we should keep in mind, of course, Gary Miyake is an attorney, but we should keep in mind for any legal advice, we will get it through our corporation attorney. In the same token, anybody that comes up here has a way to speak and give, speak and whatever they want, obviously. So go ahead.
Especially since it's collective bargaining and Act 78 and other issues, and a lawsuit pending with Act 78.
Right.
He may have been privy at the time lawsuit was filed, although he left in May. I just don't want any discussion as to it that can impact. That's all I'm saying.
No, and I respect it, but in the same token, obviously you can't state something that would have been in private.
Everything I say is based on public information, it's not based if, if, if this council voted to waive privilege with respect to everything that I know, I would be glad to speak to all those things.
Well, I'm glad you have stuff too, and they would waive, and I have a lot of stuff to say too. I would just ask you refrain if you're gonna talk about collective bargaining, other issues coming up, or a pending lawsuit that it can impact it. Please refrain of that, that's what I'm saying.
No, 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 I think you're trying to cut me off from being able to speak on matters of public concern, Mr. Freena. And again, if I am in a position where they want to waive privilege on certain issues, I will address those issues. And they can end up.
Privilege on a lot of issues.
They can do a closed session if they want to with me.
If you wanna go there, we can waive a lot of issues.
Okay. Oh, absolutely.
It's mine, well.
No problem.
Hi, guys. We're in a council meeting, but. Okay, but just again, just a quick second. Again, council members, just keep in mind, yes, he's an attorney, and yes, he's privileged, a lot of previous information. But keep in mind, at this point, he is speaking as a resident, so any type of potential advice or comments, keep that in the back of your head, and you gotta verify that through our corporation counsel.
And nothing I'm saying is based on privileged information, and nothing I am saying is, should be taken as legal advice to this body. As a matter of fact, if, if someone contacted me and asked me to represent them, I would potentially be able to do so.
Okay. Just to be, against this. One second, I'm gonna start you two minutes again.
I disagree if it's anyone from this board. Oh, you mean I wouldn't be able to represent any member of the city council? Is that what you're saying?
Your legislation that you're accessing, you're gonna represent someone here on this, any action, is that what you're saying?
No, I didn't end up actually saying, but if someone ended up.
You're planning a lawsuit or something like this, or you're representing someone?
Also, Chair.
Okay, but, okay. You need to control.
Roger.
He's not, he's not a member of your body.
I understand that, I understand that.
Chair.
Okay, one second, we were given that, sir. Okay, go, one second, let me get him started, quite again, sir. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So as I was saying, I'm encouraged by the idea that we're bringing in new officers. I am concerned that we are not following the requirements of Act 78, and I base this on information that is publicly available, but also not necessarily generally disseminated. I think we've had a very, very problematic way of approaching Act 78, and I think we are having a problem with approaching civil service in general. And I think these things need to be looked at by the council very closely, and these things need to end up being abided by. I think a lot of people don't realize that Act 78 is not only the law in the city that applies, but a violation of Act 78 can be a crime. Section 15 and section 16 of Act 78 make it a crime not to follow those provisions of Act 78. So you need to be mindful of that. And I'm not saying this is advice to you, because I'm not in the position to give you such advice. But I am saying it as a concerned citizen, and I think you need to understand that the problems that you have with the police department do not stem from a few bad apples. You don't have people leaving and starting a career somewhere else because they are just changing their mind or don't like the pay structure. They are leaving because, because they are dissatisfied with the way things are going and the future they end up seeing for the city and for the department. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
For the record, Council Chair, I disagree with everything that was said, and we will prepare a written response to Mr. Miyake.
So I was just about to tell you, you beat me to the punch. So of course, obviously, you're entitled to your opinion, as he is entitled to his. No, I understand, well, whatever it is, whatever you wanna say, anybody can say whatever they want. In the same token, if you don't mind, Roger, based on some of these comments, if you wanna retort, maybe email all of us council members with your answers. Thank you.
Council Chair, you were part of that whole session, you talked about the issue. You guys already learned what was going on and all the investigations.
Okay.
Council Chair, may I?
We can't, no, 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 we're done, we're done. Just, anybody else that would like to go up and speak, public comments on agenda items only?
Good evening, Zuhair Al Khattari, 5400. I was asked several times when I was on the council by this mayor to put on the agenda the Act 78 so we can approve it, and we put it on the ballot to get rid of it. And unfortunately, I was dumb enough to follow his advice and to follow what he asked from me, and I did. Bring it up twice, and I apologize, and I'm not here for any reason. I apologize for making that move because it was the wrong move, because Act 78 is the best thing happening in the police department, and it should be followed. And I just wanna ask the mayor, are those lawsuits pending against him? And why, and how much it cost the city so far? Because there is settlement, which I read from papers from the Treasury Department, which is public information. There is a settlement for $2 million. I don't know if you are aware of it, if it was in closed session, and I FOIA'd yesterday. I want to know who are the recipient of $2 million of taxpayers?
One second, sir, you don't have to go away. Gentlemen and ladies, council members, do not comment on this, because anything that's, no, no, I'm, I'm, no, no, I'm just making sure that I'm not.
I know the rules.
Is it a call? No, no, I'm asking you, same because it's in a closed session, please, no comments on this, but go ahead.
Okay, so I would like to know, and I did ask it twice, and no response from the city. And yesterday, I took two copies, and I have him sign copy for me, and copy, I kept it to them. And I expect answers, what are those $2 million paid and why? This is taxpayers' money. And we should know who sued the city and why? And if somebody is at fault, caused a big lawsuit which caused big amount of money, there should be accountability in the city, and it is the city council's duty to know why these things, because you have the power to censure, you have the power to investigate, you have the power to subpoena. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman, please state if you're speaking as a councilman or as a resident.
Tom Wenzel, resident, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights.
But yours, just to be clear, you're speaking as a resident, correct?
Speaking as a resident, yes. I was kinda, got my curiosity about this Act 78, and I would like to give my time over to Mr. Miyake if he cares to explain what.
That's, I apologize, but it's not allowed by councilmen.
You could do that. Groups of people do it all the time.
No, not in this policy. We voted on that as a, as a group.
Yeah.
We don't do that.
Is that written down somewhere?
Anybody that wants to comment, obviously, you know, they're welcome to comment under the public comment section, again, that's up to them, but.
Well, statements were made that I'm really curious about. And how are we gonna find out about them?
We could look into it through administration, or you're welcome to call whoever you wanna call after the fact, but it cannot be, you cannot pass your time over to somebody else, that's something we don't allow.
I think that's against any rules that I've heard of. I mean, can we make a rule like that over, under Robert's Rules of Order?
I could ask our corporation counsel, I've never heard of them.
Residential groups do it all the time, residents come in and speak as a group.
It's his choice whether he's gonna follow, listen to you, but you've said it cannot be done.
Yeah. We did that as a group, and we passed that order, that was a long time ago. It was a while back, no, it was not an ordinance, it was a city council body agreement. And Mr. Miyake was council, council, was our attorney, when we, we had this too. And he, he never said that we had to do it.
Well, we've done it in the last year, we had a group of.
How, we never passed that time?
We had an association come in there.
You may have seen it, you may have seen it, Councilman, maybe in another particular.
Comments, not a lawsuit.
I've never seen it. He also has three minutes at the end of the meeting to continue.
Let's, let's just get the guys, this meeting's going, like, we gotta start.
Yeah. Council Chair, let's get, let's get on to. Anybody else that would like to have a public comment on agenda items?
It's a short meeting, it's.
Okay, nobody else? Anybody on Zoom?
Oh, we want, we wanna eat.
Nobody? Okay. All right, next up on agenda is item six A, claims, and, I'm sorry, fund transfers and current. Council Chair. Councilman? I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the current claims and ACH wire transfer six dash one to six dash 51 as submitted. Second. Motion made by Councilman Bedun and seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that? Council Chair, I think the council. Councilwoman, go ahead.
All right, item six four, the court order cleanup at 4172 Lane for the ordinance department. I'm wondering if that will be reimbursed to us, it's a rather extensive amount, $3,750?
It will be.
The answer is yes? Okay. Okay, 'cause if they're not living there, they probably won't wanna do it. Yeah.
Lean on the property.
Okay, so, and then also six, six and six, seven, VLN Emergency Management, I know this we're doing with ARPA money. And I'm wondering, we have a contract with them, and this is April, this is March 1 through 31st and April 1 through April 30th. And apparently, we're looking at about $28,000 being paid, but the overall a month amount that we've got is pretty extensive. That comes off, well, what's left after we do the 10 million, and is there another two out there? What, what we're doing is, we've got all their expenses here for those two months. And apparently, we have a contract with them for $1,305,600. Okay, now, is this the last of what's gonna be? Okay.
Here's your microphone.
Good afternoon. Again, they are hired for a million dollars, up to a million dollars, based on task-specific projects that we give them. Right now, they're working on, they've worked on two projects for us, which was the surveys to the public, as well as the MIHAB and LEWAP program development for our residents to get their mortgages, water bills, utilities paid for. So those are the projects that they're currently billing us for. If you do wanna provide ARPA funds for the residents, that is a project that you would request this organization to do for you, making sure that we are following the guidelines to provide that premium pay for the employees of the city. So if as a body you wanna follow Mr. Wenzel's recommendation, you can certainly request that in a motion or send us an email so that we can engage with them on that project and see what the costs are going to be for that.
Council Chair, how much have we paid this company so, up to date, or with, including this project that they're working on?
I believe about $48,000.
$48,000, thank you. Council Chair. I had a couple of questions since you're up there, Dearborn Mariana. A couple different ones had, and I'll tell you which ones, six point, they're all the same situation, six twenty-three, six thirty, six forty-two, six forty-four, and six forty-five. All of them have total payout amount zero, but yet there's bills. So just wanted to get a clarification, you know why that would be? There's bills in them.
If you wanna show me afterwards, I can see, but again, the backup should be there of what each invoice was.
But at the end, the payout was, there's invoices, but I'll tell you amounts, twenty-two, forty-one.
Yeah, even.
So it could add up to what the total invoice is.
I knew what you said, I'm sorry.
Sorry, the invoices at the back should add up what the total is, so I don't know where you're seeing that zero.
On the front, on each one of these, it says total payout amount is zero. But yet there's bills of different dollar amounts on each and every one of these. I can handle these, you could look them over and let me know, that's fine. But, and then when you're ready, you could go up and just give an explanation, because I don't wanna exclude them from the vote.
I had a question too.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, this is a Q and A, so that means that the company is pretty, that one, I want to go on the board, I have my own.
Internal? Okay, but they, why they say, I thought payout.
So that cover page is, it's a weird method that our city utilizes, and we need to update. But that just means that it's a purchase order, that the only reason that that page is there is because it tells the controller department that that's a pre-approved company, the pre-approved contract.
Okay.
So it doesn't have to come for reapproval of what that contract is.
Got it, thank you.
Councilman Ahmad? Yeah, Mariana, I'm sorry, I had a, so you said we're, we're, we approved that for a million, to pay them up to a million dollars?
Yes.
And how come the contract says 1.3?
I'm sorry, 1.3, whatever it is, I was, I don't have it in front of me right now, but whatever the contract says, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Hearing none, motion made by Councilman Bedun and seconded by Councilman Muscat. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item seven A, DPW Director Conrad.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for A and B Operator Systems to Phoenix Environmental as the only bidder, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Further, provided the mayor also authorizes such payment as a necessary expense, the city council authorizes warrants to be issued for the payment of these services. By doing so, the council authorizes such warrant and payment without prior authorization by the city council of the specific warrant and payment as permitted by and consistent with the city charter section 8.9 as outlined in seven A.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Director Conrad, I had a question for you on this one. And then the gentleman in the audience, Mr. Hassan Bazey, also brought it up, that's his field of work, so. I had on there, on my notes, one. So when we put it out for bids during, during the bidding, what you wrote on here is, you put it out for bids, and I think it was like two or three times, and you only got one bid. And I get that, that's, that has nothing to do with you, that's not your fault, obviously. But the question I had, when you get just one bid on something like this, I don't know what the real cost is, I have no idea, personally. But when you only get one bid, that's not gonna give you any type of reference point as to whether that's a good amount or a bad amount. So again, I had a one here to ask, wow, one bid, that's not enough to make a determination unless you personally have some sort of expertise in, in this particular field. With that being the case, my conclusion was even more verified when Mr. Bazey said that he's in the field, that this amount is just way too high. So what is the, to me, somebody should know that this is too high. Either calling them, questioning them, or put it out for bids again, I don't know, advertise it more. I don't know the answers, but we can't just because we got one bid on something that, I didn't know what the real cost would be. Let's say something should be 100,000, and we get a bid for 380, but because we only got one bid, we just take it. Somebody should be able to look that over, checks and balances, and say, no, we're not gonna accept this at all.
Well, we placed this out for bid. I did a two-week bidding on Bid Neck. I believe the first time, 11 companies downloaded the bid and the spec, and we got only the one bid. Controller's office suggested that, you know, we extend that another week, and we reduced our bid, our bid bond or our bid deposit by 50%. I think we dropped it down to $500, I don't know that number exact, but we did reduce the bid deposit, you know, thinking maybe the bid deposit was too much for the first, you know, letting. After another week, we still got only one bid, so that's why I proceeded with this. You know, I don't know what reference they're having, I mean, one of the things that may be a little different than what Mr. Bazey's thinking the price should be is, we did require that all the information be cloud-based and available 24/7. You know, so that, you know, to, you know, so I don't know, I mean, a lot of people, the, you know, what was done in the past is it was just done with paper and pencils and files and stuff in, when we did our, you know, tank submission and we redid our, our tanks, you know, there was some issues with the way we were doing it. So that is one of the reasons why, you know, I wanna go with somebody who's a professional AB operator. That's why we put this out to bid.
No.
I mean, if Mr. Bazey, I don't know why, I mean, if he could have provided us a better rate, I mean, how come, you know, his company didn't look at this and bid on it, you know?
Well, they don't have, obviously. I know, but my main question is not questioning whether we need this particular product.
Right, we do need it.
That's fine. The question is, when we only get one bid after we put it out for bid, and nobody's bid except one person. and let's use a number like right now here, we have it for three years, uh, I think it was like forty-nine off the top of my head or something like that.
Forty-nine thousand two.
Yeah, so let's just use a hypothetical number right now of two hundred thousand came in on this. I, for one, as a council member, my specialty is real estate, I have no idea if that number is good, bad or ugly, okay? So the question is, wh- who in our city would be able to say, hey, no, this number doesn't make sense? Or do we just, I'm gonna tell you right now, so far today, based on my, we don't worry and then what Mr. Bazey said, me personally, I'm voting no. But what is going to be our, our, our checks and balances to make sure this number is reasonable? Let's pretend Mr. Bazey wasn't here.
Okay, looking at, you know, just like one of the pay items is the weekly and monthly inspections. I mean, they take several hours, they're charging a hundred dollars for that, I mean, they have travel costs and everything to get to our place. I don't think that those are unreasonable for somebody to come and do the inspections. Um, you know, the, the, the weekly, the monthly, the annual, you know, they, they increase in duration and the things that they have to check. So, I mean, I, I, you know, if, you know, those weekly inspections would have been five hundred dollars, you know, for a weekly inspection, I know, you know, takes a little bit over an hour. I would say, yeah, that's excessive, but I mean, a hundred dollars for an hour inspection, including travel time, I mean, that's not, that's not unreasonable, I mean, um, you know, I, I, you know, I, I don't think, I mean, you know, I think Dearborn Schools uses them, Ford Motor Company uses them, um, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, people who, I mean, maybe not small operators use them, but you know, big operators like Ford and municipalities, um, you know, I use Phoenix or, you know, they're, they're some of their clients.
Mr. Conrad, I have a question, that's okay, council chair.
Councilman Bedun and Councilman.
I think Councilman Muscat.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
And mine just simple, Mr. Conrad, do you think that this is well and beneficial for the city and you think this is a good bid?
I mean, I'm not an expert in the fuel system, but I mean, it, you know, based on, you know, the weekly and monthly hourly rates that they're charging, I mean, I don't think that's unreasonable. I mean, and, and you know, a lot of this is, you know, not to exceed, you know, there's some other things, you know, like, you know, emergency calls and things like that. Well, if we never have an emergency, we never use that money, you know, so, um. You know, like I say, I, I'm gonna tell you right now, I, I, I'm honest with you, I'm not an expert in the fuel system, but I mean, you know, looking at, you know, what we pay other people to do things, you know, uh, a hundred dollars for an hour, hour and a half, you know, doesn't seem that bad. You know, for an inspection, I mean, it sounds like a lot because it's a three-year contract, you know, um.
Councilman Muscat?
I got a question, because I, 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 service contracts to me, uh, sometimes the way they're written are about as useless as lips on a chicken. And, uh, I see weekly inspections, we got forty of them for a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
We got eleven monthly inspections and we have an annual inspection. What do they do different in each inspection? That the price goes from, uh, one hundred dollars a week to twelve hundred dollars for the annual inspection. So they got, you gotta know what they're gonna do more.
I'm not exactly sure, because I'm not an A B operator, but, but I mean, each one of them goes more in-depth into the inspection. You know, as to what they're looking at, what systems are checking to make sure there's no leaks or anything like that. Um, you know, they're looking at records and things like that that we're keeping, uh, so in, again, I mean, you know, there's only, there's only forty, there's only forty weekly inspections, because when they come out and do a monthly inspection, they don't charge us for a weekly that time. You know, so I mean, if you add up all those, they should add up to fifty-two weeks. A, 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 and, yeah, I mean, you know, so, you know, part of what they're doing is they're doing the weekly inspection along with the monthly inspection at the same time, which is a more in-depth inspection. And then when they do, you know, the annual inspection, they're doing the weekly, the monthly and the more in-depth annual inspection, so that's why those prices increase for those. Um, again, you know, I'm very limited on, you know, what the fuel system, I learned a lot of this just in dealing with the corrections and and things that we had to do to our fuel system in the last six months, you know, to put it back into service.
Now, our fuel, I'm not, our fuel system, okay, uh, it, that just supports D P W, correct?
It, yes, I mean, but there is, like, the fire department will fill up there, um, on occasion. Uh, Semta, you know, the recreation uses our fuel pumps to, uh, fuel up their, their, um, their Semta vehicles, so, I mean, there's a, there's a very small other group of, of users of our fuel system.
You know, I, I don't see what, in the contract, what they're going to do on these inspections, and that's what bothers me. I mean, somebody could just come over there with a flashlight and they're done, okay? I, I want to know what I'm gonna get as a customer when they do an inspection. If I go out and inspect something, maybe a little bit different than what somebody else inspects, okay? But I don't see anything in here that tells me what they're gonna do on each inspection. And that's the problem I have with all of our service contracts.
So this isn't, this isn't a, a service contract, this is a reporting requirement, uh, I can't, I'm, I'm failing the acronym now that, that, that requires us to do these.
And I know we have to have.
Reporting in, you know, the, what they're looking for and what they're reporting on, it, it's not anything that I've made up, it's made up by, you know.
N F P A.
The, N F P A? No.
That's a state problem.
Um,
And, and I understand what you're saying, but what I, again, and, and I know we have to have this because we do have storage tanks. The problem is, I don't know what I'm paying for. They're telling me a week, weekly inspection, what does that consist of?
Oh.
What does a monthly inspection consist of, or the annual, I don't know what they're gonna do.
Then do you have to blame me? I mean, I just don't have that fuel, I mean, I guess if I had all that information in my mind, I could be the A B operator. You know, I mean, there's, I, it's Laura is the company that, or the, the organization that certifies and makes, and they're, they're the ones who go through and check all of our fuel reporting and our inspections and things like that, so, I mean.
Let me make a suggestion, please, is if we can get some of that information and bring it back, uh, refer this back to the administration so we get somebody's.
I support.
Yeah, answer this.
All right, I, I, I will, next council meeting, I'll bring, I'll supply you with what the Laura reporting requirements are for weekly, monthly, annual.
Uh, okay. We, the Robert made the, the.
I know, but one second, Councilman Amad. Yes, I had a question, did we use this company before? Who, who did we use before and how much was it before?
We, we did this in-house.
Before?
Yes.
So whatever you used to do is not there anymore?
Correct.
What did it cost us? Do you know that number?
Who was an employee?
I, I, well, I mean, it, it's, it was part of their employee salary, plus, you know, I think they might have got a uh, hourly bump for having the certificate, but, I mean, um, based on the problems we had or the things that we've discovered when we did our fuel system revamp, I mean, I don't really think we should be doing this in-house. I mean, when you do something in-house, you tend to overlook a lot of things that you should address. And by having a third party look at these things, you know, they're going to tell you, hey, you need to fix this, or, you know, Laura's gonna shut you down when they come by and look, um, you know, I mean, as long as I'm in charge, I think, you know, hey, it, it would be better to have a third party, you know, making sure that we're doing things correctly and, and the way they're supposed to be done.
So if you vote no on this today, what happens next? Send it back for bidding or?
I can amend it. Possible for bidding or?
I, I, I'd like to have the answers to the question. I mean, the way I'm thinking about it, so this is like every gas station has to do?
Every gas station has to do this.
Yeah, but I don't see like gas station paying that much money in two years.
Okay.
Council chair.
Next, Councilwoman.
Well, my, my question was, when do we have to do this by? Is there a deadline?
I, I've, I mean, yes, we don't have a, I mean, I've been using Phoenix to do my inspections and putting them on council claims because they were the company that did our fuel island system and got them back online. This is just a formality to make them a, you know, my operator for the next three years. But yes, I am currently, you know, occasionally you'll see a bill for Phoenix environmental on current claims. Um, and, you know, I've been putting them there because, you know, I have to provide my weekly inspections, so.
And my second question was, do we anticipate having eighty hourly rates for service calls? Do we anticipate eighty?
No, I mean, I, you know, it's there in case, you know, there's some issues, you know, some discoveries that come up during one of the weekly or, or monthly or annual inspections that would require.
Eighty per year or eighty for three years?
It, yeah, so that's a, that's like an as-needed part of it. I mean, the only thing that is required, excuse me, is the weekly, monthly, annual, you know, those inspections, some of those other items at the end there are more like as needed, you know, you hope you don't need them, but they're there if you do.
Okay.
Council chair.
Yes.
Councilman Constance and then Councilman Wenzel.
Um, so, Mr. Conrad, if you can say, past years, has there been other companies, has there, was it always Phoenix past years? And then what was the amount of the original, uh, bond requirement? It's now a thousand, but what was it previously when you lowered it?
I believe we lowered it to five hundred.
But what was it?
Oh, I think it was a thousand, we lowered it to five.
I thought you said it was a higher amount and you lowered it to a thousand.
It, no, I think it was, I think it was a thousand, the, the, the bid deposit and we lowered it to five hundred hoping to get more bids, um, and.
So the first time with a thousand, you didn't get any?
We got one.
This, this particular company?
Correct.
Okay, because I would agree that I can re, uh, amend my motion to, just need more information.
Okay, let's see what Councilman Wenzel has.
Um, thank you, Council Chair, you know, I'm here to represent the people and we spent a lot of time on this and I, my bet is that a lot of you don't even know what we're talking about, you know? These, if, if, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a, there's some gas tanks, one or two that are at the D P W are underground that the city is required to have inspected. Correct, like the, the gas station has their tanks inspected for leaks and different things, but, um, with, it's been going on, I, I just wanted to clear that up with everyone here, it's only on two, one or two tanks, what is it?
We have two tanks, well, two tanks and we have a used oil tank.
Because that's for two tanks on the D P W properties, not tanks all over the city right now.
Okay.
Okay. So Councilman, you want, um,
Council chair.
You want to amend your motion?
Yeah, uh, tell me when you're ready, Council Chair.
I, I'd also like to see this, just, you know, for, for us to understand it better, I'd like to see this go out for bids. Uh, maybe we can try to get a couple of other bidders, just so we get a better understanding.
Probably go out somehow other than bid net, I mean, if it's just on bid net, could we go out and expand a bid? Um, maybe outside bid net, I don't know.
I mean, I, I don't hear this. Purchasing, I mean, that's Controller's Office is in charge of purchasing, I mean.
Let's get the addition.
But I mean, I mean. And that's hardly fair to the current person here that, you know, put in a bid. You know, I mean, his stuff is all here in the council meetings, I mean.
We have a question mark as to the amount, so I'm just thinking out loud here, for something like this, if all gas stations use the same thing.
But are they all doing it the same way?
I don't know, but I'm just wondering out loud, to me, even if it's a phone call, I, I, I'll tell you right now, personally, I've always hated this bid net stuff. To me, I, I like the old school way, I mean, you use bid net, but if you need more bids, one sec, you make a couple of calls. So to me, you can make a couple of calls to any gas station, people say, who do you use? Uh, it, does this number look reasonable? Bid on this, that's what I would do, but that's old school.
Council chair.
So, so.
To finish. To finish, maybe Corporation Council could post something for us, because maybe it's our charter, maybe something stopping us from going out and bidding outside of bid net. And so, I, I don't know why we don't go outside of bid net, but I don't know, m- mister, Corporation Council can, uh, say, come in?
To who you're putting out, opening up for bids, there's other websites and you can put it out. I mean, it may be, it may be the issue that other companies may not find it, uh, financially feasible to get involved in this.
Also, well, based on this bid, they probably are, but.
Council chair.
Okay, so now, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna.
I, I just want to end it real quick, guys, and, you know, if we can go out and we can expand our wings, we're in the twenty-first century, we should be, there, there should be ads on social media, we should be in the newspaper, we should be in the Yellow Pages, everywhere, guys, we shouldn't just be on bid net, it's terrible.
But a company's got it in, didn't submit a bid.
Well, because we're only on bid net.
But they still, they, they, they looked at it and they decided they didn't want to work.
I think the next step is.
I mean, this can be the last.
You can't force people to submit a bid.
But you also, we also do expect our people to be limited.
Council, okay, nobody from the audience, please, okay, last comment.
I think the next step is to refer it back to the administration.
Yeah, or vote.
We get the information, let's say we get the information, next meeting, if not, it's up to the administration to, uh, have it, uh, rebid.
Can make your motion.
I move that we refer item seven A back to the administration and D P W uh, for further information and then the administration can consider, it should be sent out for rebid. And the issue of how we advertise for bid, whether we use bid net or Facebook or whatever, that's a separate issue.
Seconded by Nancy.
I'll second it if we put in a timeframe.
As soon as possible, because.
Now, we got two weeks.
ASAP. For, the legal term is fourth web.
Okay, so a motion made by Councilman Constance, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Brier, all in favor? This is to go back out to administration, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, ma'am clerk.
Eva Dallas.
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Moby Dun?
No.
Nancy Brier?
Yes.
Robert Constance?
Yes.
Ray Muscat?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Motion carried.
I, I just want people to know.
Did it carry or fail?
But, carry to go back to. I want you to know that I don't vote is because I wanted to go out back for bids.
Well, that, that's what he said, they said to send it back to them, to give us information on it. And we, and we considered to give back. Didn't say that, well, I'm pretty sure they are, but otherwise.
All right, next item on agenda is item seven B, Library Director McCaffrey requests for bids.
Council chair. Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the Controller's Office to ad- advertise for bids for the Caroline Kennedy Library Carpet Replacing Project as outlined in seven dash B.
Support. And motion made by Councilman Amad and seconded by Councilman Bedun, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item on agenda is report from Mayor, item eight A, Michigan Municipal League Membership Renewal.
Council chair.
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the payment for the annual Michigan, Michigan Municipal League Membership Renewal in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred sixty-three dollars to be paid to G L A account. Uh, account number one oh one, two hundred nine five eight point zero 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 as outlined in eight A.
Second.
Okay. Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun and seconded by Councilman Constance, any discussion on that?
Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item eight B, Communications Supporting the Alliance of Rouge Communities.
Council chair.
Councilman?
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council received, noted and filed the communications supporting the alliance of the Rouge Communities A R C proposal, tree canopy investment in unserved communities, underserved committee, commit communities in southeast Michigan for funding through the U S D A Forest Services and urban community forestry program as outlined in eight B.
Second.
Hey, motion made by Councilman Muscat and seconded by Councilwoman Brier, any discussion on that?
Council chair.
Councilman?
Uh, you know, I was, I received an email from one of our, 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 uh, citizens, uh, along these lines about community tree planting grants. And, uh, uh, I don't know if I could, should bring this up now or bring this up at, uh, new business for council people, should we just?
I'll keep it for you.
Okay, that, that's just fine, I just wanted to add and make sure that we, uh, were aware of that.
And you could reference this particular thing, but it's not, whatever you're gonna mention, it's not gonna affect the vote.
No, 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 I just want to, you know, it was along the same line, so I thought I'd mention it and make sure that we, uh.
Any other discussion items on eight B? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion period. Next item on the agenda is item nine A, reports from city officials.
Council chair.
Councilman?
I move that the, uh, Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of a hundred and five monitors for the computers in the city libraries for a total cost of twelve thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue the following payment from account number
Bless you.
seven three eight, seven three eight, eight nine one. Moreover. Seven three eight eight nine one. Moreover, provided the mayor also authorizes such payment as necessary expense. The city council authorizes warrants to be issued for the payment of these services. By doing so, the city council is authorizing any such warrants and payments. Without prior authorization by the city council of the specific warrant as, and payment as permitted and consistent with. City Charter, section eight point nine, as outlined in nine A.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constant and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer, any discussion on that? Councilman?
Is this coming out of the library account?
Yes, thank you. Okay, any other discussion items on that? Okay, hearing none, all favor, please state aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is new business, item thirteen A, business license renewals.
Counsel.
Go ahead.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman?
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the renewal of business license for Fairlane Eagles, number three eight six one. At two zero seven three Van Born. Happy Wealthy one six eight LLC at five six eight zero North Telegraph. Connect Auto Sales LLC at four four one three South Beach Daily. And Carl, or St. Carl E. Post, two thirty-two at two three eight five zero Military as outlined in thirteen A.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Muscat and seconded by Councilman Baydun, any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I'd like the question to be answered by our Corporation Council. Uh, I know we're renewing business licenses here. And, uh, in the past, here, this past year, uh, we've had some issues with a few businesses that are not complying with their site plan. The police had, has been called out to the place, the Building Engineering Department and ordinance. What is, what is the, what do we need to do to stop businesses from, from violating their site plan? I, I don't want to mention a business right offhand right now, but, uh, there's got to be something that. When they violate their site plan, something should be done immediately. I, I mean, we can't keep calling the police and, and have them go out there and. And do this because, the, you know, it's concerning even our, our, our roadways, is what I'm concerned about. I know we started looking overall at all the businesses, ones that have defaulted on their tickets. Um, we've tried moving them and we're moving them in progress, um, because we, a number of defaults have been issued. We're putting them on the tax. We're gonna be going after more of the businesses to clear up, make sure they have the CFOs and all, and the business license. Number of them don't. We're collecting all of them. We're gonna be looking at the other issues with the Buildings Department, exactly what you're talking about. So we are, we're not, you know, we're trying to, this hasn't been done for a lot of years. We have stuff from two thousand nineteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. We're collating in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. So we are putting it together. We're working with the ordinance department. Who enforces it as well as the Building Department and with our clerks. I, I just, you know, want to mention out to the public that, you know, the, the ordinance department, Building Engineering Department. Are doing the best they can to, to correct some of these violations, but sometimes it's just, you know, it's too hard to do it when they continue. These businesses continuously, you know, they clean up their act for two or three weeks and then go right back at it again. So. Well, that's, that's part of what we've talked about with the Blight campaign as well. Make sure that they comply with all the, all the ordinances. And they've got to be the stellar representative to the city and they're our face to the public. And I think we have to, uh, we are taking it seriously and we are collecting and working with the different departments. Put a new image and a new attack, new approach, as well as community involvement with these issues.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion items on this?
Here.
Council Chair.
Council Chair. Yes, Council, I'm sorry. Um, it's no secret how I feel about used, used car lots in Dearborn Heights. I think we've got plenty of them. Um, I was wondering if, uh, our ordinance director is online.
Yes, he is. Director dish room? Please unmute.
They don't.
Go ahead, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi, uh, good evening, Director. Can you tell me if you have issues with the Connect Auto Sales in the, in the past? Or his ordinance violations?
Uh, which, uh, which one is that, Councilman Wenzel? The one, is it the one on Van Born?
South Beach Daily.
Are we naming businesses specifically because they have a chance to comment on, thank you.
Well, although at the same time, it is, it's on the, uh. With the license renewal. Okay, but, but, but I think we should refrain from naming specific people. I, I tell you myself, I remember this particular business in the past. Haven't come in front of the council body and I don't recall ever any particular issues myself with that business.
Well, I mean, Council Chair, don't we have the information in front of us if they're, you know, delinquent on their water bill?
Right, everything except ordinance.
We would, we would have that.
That's something. Well, the reason I'm asking is I had some neighbors in that area say that they, uh, there's, there's issues that they had there that they reported.
Uh, yeah. To be fair, just to be fair to this particular business, we can't vote potentially no on something just based on what a resident said. To somebody else. So if there is something directed to ordinance, then the ordinance would check into it. I, I just don't want to be.
No, I know, that's why I'm asking if there was any issues, because if, if he says to me.
We can let the council beforehand.
Yes, but Councilman.
If the director said to me, oh yeah, we have, uh, you know, we have no complaints at all, or if he says we have ten complaints a day. That would make a difference on how I vote on this. And I know, you know, I've heard some residents, I'll, I'll say it, that they've had issues with, with double parking vehicles there.
Okay, so then in that particular case, they gotta follow, you know, the tracks. The next step would be to call ordinance directly. That's why I'm asking if there has been. Yeah, he's saying he's not aware of any off the top of his head. Is that what you, you said, Director?
I, I am not aware of any currently, but we are working on a different process, uh, moving forward when these renewals come up. I will tell you that.
Okay, I, I agree. I, I like that idea, maybe getting some information on.
On this, on this report also when we get it.
Yeah, I agree. I think with the report, I mean, we're gonna get, see if the order is delinquent, we can see if they're up to their taxes.
So.
See if they got any filing.
I agree with that, but let's, let's look into this, just, uh, Roger. In the future, I'd be okay with, with, with having, if there's any particular business has any ordinance issues, but first thing we gotta look into legalese of this, A.
Yeah.
And then B, if it is allowed, then obviously we can work with the clerk's office and they can start checking with the ordinance department before they give us licenses to be renewed, if you don't mind. But initially, Roger's gonna look into legalese. In other words, you know, can you, i- i- I'm just speaking out loud here. Let's say, you know, a particular resi- uh, business had, uh, you know, grass was a little high, instead of, you know, uh, three, four inches, it was six inches. So do we not give them a license because of that? You know, that, that's not a good idea, obviously. Let us know and then we'll go ahead and ha- have the clerk maybe add it as an additional item in the future.
Uh, yes, and we started doing that on a case by case, every business is by case basis. The clerk and I have been meeting on every business with certain issues. We will continue, we will include ordinance.
Okay.
For your reports.
So let's go ahead and take this to a vote. Item thirteen A, all in favor, please state aye. Any opposed?
No, because of that issue.
Okay, ma'am clerk, please take a roll call.
Gonna go backwards, it's the same. Ray Muscat?
Yes.
Robert Canston?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Moby Dune?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Dave Abdallah?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Um, next item on. Yes, Council.
Um, in the future, maybe, you know, we, we should bid on license for renewal separately instead of bunching a, you know. Grouping a bunch of them together in one, one vote.
So, so what we've done in the past, Councilman, if you don't mind, what we've done in the past, Councilman, if there's like, let's use hypothetical seven, right? We vote on it, but if any council member had a particular issue, uh, with one particular one, then we'll go ahead and do them individually. So as they're okay with all of them, there's no sense in wasting time going through them one at a time, since in general, most of the times it's a formality. But I do see your point though. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is, uh, item thirteen B. Go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the renewal of the temporary food truck tech, or maybe our Corporation Council can, uh, uh, lean in on this, but moving forward. I don't want to just see ads for cadets or firefighters or something on social media. Anything we go out for bid. It's the twenty-first century, we must go on social media for everything. That means Facebook, that means Instagram, that means TikTok, that means Snapchat, I don't care what it is. But we need to, if we're gonna go out for bids for anything, it needs to be more than just BidNet. We cannot just stick on BidNet anymore. It's, it's enough. Like, I have no idea half the things that we're bidding for. We don't know. I'd love to go out and tell people, hey, go out and bid on this, on, on a community page. Uh, I mean, I mean, it's, it's, it's crazy. I'm, I mean, it's insane.
I agree.
It's the twenty-first century. I'd like to see other things. On social media that we're bidding for the community so that it can be an easier accessible process. There should have been a hundred people bidding on what we have. For the city of Dearborn, it's a great community. Uh, I love this community and we're gonna make sure, moving forward. I, I, at least for me, my vote's gonna be no if it's only on BidNet. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'd like to commend, uh, our Recreation Director, Kim Lorenzel. Uh, I was at the Summer Festival there. Had a great time with my, uh, son-in-law, daughter and granddaughter. I did have one complaint and I don't know if I should do this publicly. Uh, when you closed, my granddaughter did not like it. She was very upset with you. I told her it wasn't me, it was you. Uh, but no, she had a great time, I had a great time, it was a very nice event and, and I'll tell you, the way you put it on, I, I just got to tell you, great, 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 great job. And, and I heard it was a record-breaking number of people that showed up. Is that correct?
Every year.
So, good job.
Fortunately, we had a few people that, you know, I, I think their parents are very proud of them today, the way they acted. Uh, and it, and, and unfortunately, they had to try to ruin it for everybody and I'm hoping that the. Uh, city, uh, really prosecutes these people to the fullest extent of the law for what they did at this festival. And it's, and it's a shame a- and, uh. They need to be treated, they, they, they need to pay the price for acting like that. And, and the parents are, I'm sure are proud of them for how they acted.
Council Chair.
Ah, yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Council Chair. First about the Blight, uh, uh, Council, for a time, I did have a brief, uh, conversation with the Corp Council before the meeting. And I think we're gonna set up a meeting pretty soon, which is gonna, you're gonna be in it, like we just talked about it, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And, uh, I do agree, Council Chair, with, uh, Councilman Baydun about BidNet, I think it needs to be advertised more. We need, we need probably different platform or different kind of advertisement, especially on social media. Uh, third, I also would like to welcome the new, uh, police officers to the city and, um, I was kinda pleased to be honest with you to see. Uh, uh, Dearborn Heights resident to be police officers in the city and, you know, taking the step to serve. Uh, I also would like to commend our director for an amazing summer fest. I was there too with my kids, but I was looking at your, uh. Social media, I guess you were having fun more than.
I was on slides.
Yeah. Uh, finally, Council Chair, this Sunday is Father's Day, so I hope we can take the chance to acknowledge the role of our fathers. Make sure we express love, gratitude to them, take them out. I mean, they play a big role in our life.
Say that out loud again, I want to go to a nice restaurant.
So I'd like to wish everybody and the city especially a happy Father's Day this weekend.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's say one last thing, I'm so sorry, brief, but, you know, when Councilman Ahmad speaks, it's like so heartfelt and then, and you know, he's such a good man. And I just want him to know this, so happy Father's Day.
Uh, thank you, sir, same to you.
Happy Father's Day to everybody, but this guy's just such a good guy.
Um, I'd, I'd also like to take this, just quick opportunity to recognize one of our collegiate football athletes here. I know Mr. Russell there. They did, the Troy Lions are hiring, so if you'd like to, look at, I, I got their number if you'd like.
Do we want him to speak, David?
I'm sorry?
You don't want to tell us all of your stuff?
Yeah. If he wants to get up, if he doesn't, he doesn't. During the public comments, absolutely. I'm sure, thank you. You definitely lion's size, so we're good.
If you're good, go to the Packers instead. They got Super Bowls. They got Super Bowls to their name.
Thank you, Council Chair. Uh, a couple of things, as I was, I also like to echo, uh, Council Ahmed, uh, Happy Father's Day to our fathers out there and, uh. Not an easy job, it's, uh, you can, you can be a dad, but to be a true father takes a lot of effort and, uh. Sure, most of us can speak to that and, and it's something that, uh, we enjoy doing, so Happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there.
Um, I mean, it's not as big as Mother's Day, but we're getting, we gotta cook our own food.
Now it is.
I'm sorry to mention this, just past Sunday, I was invited to a luncheon, Father's Day Luncheon for the first time ever. I'm like, wow.
Congratulations, Dad. Um, uh, you know, I, when I went up there to speak and I, I couldn't share my time with anyone, I'd, I'd like the, the clerk or someone to look into that where, where. It is in writing somewhere, or is it just a suggestion that you can't do it? Because we've done in the past and I remember talking about it, but I, I never seen a resolution on it. And I asked the clerk to look into it. And, uh, speaking about the clerk, um, there was a. Uh, an issue with, uh, the, the city purchasing some netting and, uh, for the golf course. I brought this up and I was chastised because I said, hey, Tom, you didn't read your packet, it's there in the contract. With the help of the clerk, I looked everywhere and there is no mention of netting anywhere. The word netting never shows up anywhere in the contract or in any minutes. From any contract, and the administration went to the treasurer's office and said that the city council approved netting for the golf course. And this is something we, you know, I, I'm not gonna overlook it, I'm not gonna let it go. And this is, you know, we can't, we can't do that. We can't have people coming in. And just getting things they want, saying the city council approved it. And I never approved it, approved it, I've never asked, maybe I would if I was asked. Um, the spirit, uh, the summer fest went off relatively good from what I heard, everybody enjoyed themselves. I had a couple of neighbors telling me that they did go there Saturday night and, and immediately left. And I was wondering, was asked the police chief if they had. Um, if they had any extra, but I know there was something happened Friday night, a little altercation Friday night. And it's terrible that this has to happen. I mean, like Councilman Muscat said, these people come in, a good thing like that, and you can see all the videos on, on. On social media, it's, it's terrible. Um, not, and, uh. Speaking of BidNet, we have a resident that visits BidNet quite a bit. And they found something out there on BidNet that the city is advertising for a Water Department Management Company. Um, I'm not sure what that means, if the mayor, what is, what does that mean, Mr. Mayor, Water Department Management? We're looking someone, a company to run the Water Department?
Did you read the whole thing?
I didn't read it, I, I'm, I'm, a resident asked.
I gotta talk to the comptroller and see what, what it entails, yeah. But, but I was gonna make a comment, actually, if you guys have any questions, you know, you guys need to call the office in advance, you know, before the meeting. You know, to find out certain things, you know, we have access to the information, so when you come to the meeting, we don't have it here. That's. Do you guys need, you have anything? I mean, you can call eight, eight to five, we're here. I'm asking the information that you need.
Well, I'm asking now, but I, I mean.
Well, it's seven thirty-five, it's a council meeting, but if you come earlier, we could have given it to you, even five minutes before five.
Well, this is something that the, you know, to be transparent, something that we should be aware of, something as serious as this, I mean, I don't, I don't even know what it is. I mean, this could be, could be something, you know, minor, but it could be something that they're trying to, the company to come in and take over the Water Department. But, um, I know, uh, coming, there's some issues with the crosswalk striping. And I don't know if you're gonna talk about it, so I won't, I won't say anything else. And I know pretty soon it's gonna be coming up, the anniversary of Joey Smith's death. Yes, and, uh, so I'll, I'll leave that there. Thank you, everyone, all the fathers out there, have a happy Father's Day.
Thank you.
Councilman Constant?
Thank you, Council.
I'm, I'm waiting for announcements. You guys all said thank you to Kim already, it was excellent.
Um, two things, number one, uh, admiration and thanks, a great thanks to our library director, Mike Cafferty. Um, you know, libraries in the past had a lot of books and kids would say they're now. There are access to the internet and computers for people who are, whatever reason, don't have, uh, uh, the internet at home. They look for jobs or need to look something up, are seniors, so I saw on the agenda, there was a couple hundred monitors and. Um, as maybe our book collection is getting smaller, the, uh, access to the. Computers are, it's just very important for the community, so thank you, Mike. And then I also thank you to the budget team, to our, uh, Chief of Staff, Mariana Hernandez, and to our comptroller. And everyone else in getting the budget passed. Um, uh, I know it wasn't perfect and there's issues outstanding, but, um. Uh, I think as a whole, I was glad to see the budget, uh, pass. Comment about trees, I remember, uh, Ruth Canfield. Um, and this was when she was on the council years ago, she lives in the same, uh, lived in the same neighborhood I do. She told me when her, her father was the township supervisor. Um, it was a great thing, you know, put a, give everybody a tree, put a tree on every tree lawn. And the problem is that those trees, especially the sycamore trees, uh, they got big. So um, we're working on getting those trees trimmed. Thank you, Councilor Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Are we, are we on announcements yet?
No, not yet. Do you have any other? Okay. So let's go ahead and go to announcements next. Any announcements for the administration?
Yes.
But Councilwoman?
All right. Well, and I did miss one other. Thank you first. Uh, the little gardens we put by both libraries, the Pride Gardens, we didn't mention. About that being done this past Saturday. Uh, and as far as announcements, six twenty-one, E Course Creek, six P M. And six twenty-two, that would be a Wednesday. Six twenty-two, Thursday, South Dearborn Heights Civic Association. Our Wayne County Commissioner, uh, Kinesik will be there at seven P M. These are both held at three, 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 five, South Beach Daily. And um, uh, just a heads up on the July meeting for anybody who's running for city council, all nine members. We decided to make our July meeting a meet and greet circumstance for those who can come and and meet them and know who they are and ask some questions. So uh, I'm thinking, I've I've already talked to, I'm, I'm actually the past president, so the current one, I couldn't get a hold of her today. But it's possible we'll have it Wednesday instead of Thursday, so we don't mess up the entertainment that we've got going here in the city. So in in July, we'll probably have it on that Wednesday, uh, the fourth Wednesday of the month, a meet and greet with all nine candidates running for city council. And then we will wait till about uh probably September to have the final six. And then at that time, we will have someone to moderate and you can ask all the questions you want. So I just wanted to give you a heads up so that you will have an opportunity. Everybody's welcome, the entire city. Please come, three, 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 five, South Beach Daily. Meet the people who wanna work for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other administrative?
Council Chair. Yes, Mayor. Um, yeah, a couple of things. Um, first. Um, I'd like for for you guys actually to be prepared, you know, when you come to the council meetings, you know, if there's an issue with a business or. Or a license to call ahead instead of shaming businesses or, you know, we're trying to attract businesses to come to the city. So when, when, when somebody public shames business, it's not good, you know, for the city. So if he has any questions before you come to the meeting, be prepared. Call the ordinance, call whoever, find out whatever you need to find out before the meeting. I think, you know, we appreciate that. Also, we had a a couple of meetings uh last week and this week with the county. Um, there's uh, we, one of the discuss, biggest discussion is um, uh, the E Course Creek was today. Last week. Uh, they were talking about, you know, some of the stuff that the city needs, you know, and we're applying for more projects with the county. Uh, they still have a little bit left uh from the ARPA money. Uh, but today we discussed a couple items, the C S O, uh, that we uh, that they're managing. That's gonna go in front of the council, uh, with, uh, there's an amount that we all, uh, from twenty seventeen. And also with uh, with actually with the A Course Creek, we found out that the Army Corps of Engineers. I know, I just wanna put something to bed. You know, we've been talking about that big projects, over two hundred and something million projects with the Army Corps of Engineers. They actually, uh, that project is not gonna go. Uh, it's actually over three hundred million now. So I did meet with uh some Army Corps of Engineers in Chicago, you know, with uh, just a few days ago. And that's some of the stuff we we discussed is the A Course Creek and the Rouge River, you know, the the water erosion. And uh, so what they are doing with the ten million dollars, they're gonna go out for a bid uh by the end of this year, the fall. Uh, but before they do that, you know, we have a meeting uh with all the stakeholders. Um, with all the communities that touch the E Course Creek, uh, the thirtieth of the month. And they're gonna talk about uh what's required, and uh there's gonna be a lot of communications with the residents. Uh, along the E Course Creek from all communities. And one of the biggest challenges that the county thinks is, you know, so uh, a a lot of times that they actually have to go go into uh residents' properties. To get into the creek, uh, to remove obstacles, uh, issue, uh, whatever's in the creek. We found all kinds of crazy stuff in the creek, you know, just in the Dearborn Heights side. So uh, they are gonna go out for a bid at the end of this year, and they're gonna uh select a company to actually go through and do the work by next year. So they would actually get get into the creek uh sometime next year, uh, once they get all the bids in. And uh, so they're expect, expected to complete, you know, everything by twenty fif, uh, twenty twenty-five, so the year after. So they should probably a year and a half or so with a cleanup. But and uh, and what the plan is to uh, they will uh, they will send a newsletter to all the residents around the creek to let them know. Um, the process or what's required, uh, you know, again, you know, they need cooperations from a lot of residents, you know, they need to get into their backyard. Uh, to see what's going on, so they can get into the creek to remove uh some of the stuff that is uh causing uh obstruction of the water flow. And uh, we'll keep the residents in um, in the loop. And uh, we'll probably put it in the newsletter, you know, once we have more information at the end of the month. And uh, the county's gonna send a newsletter as well, but I will be sending some from the city of Dearborn Heights as well.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Is that June thirtieth?
Yeah, it's gonna be just uh mayors and the supervisors of the cities and the county, twenty-sixth, I'm sorry, twenty-sixth.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Council Chair. So let's. I would follow up on something that the mayor said. Um, I know cleaning the creek up is 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 nice, clean debris out of the creek. But we've done studies before, and cleaning the creek out is is doesn't solve any of the flooding issues. It uh, you know, there, it's very, very minor concern compared to what the problems are. And the mayor said that uh, because of the mass expense of the retention basin, that we're not going to move forward. Who who's we? Who's who made the decision not to move forward with the tension basin?
Well, if you have three hundred million dollars.
Who's we? Who's who's we?
With that, not the Army Corps. The Army Corps of Engineers, there's no.
Army Corps of Engineers decide not to move forward?
They don't, there's no three hundred million dollars for the.
Who's we decided not to go ahead?
Army Corps of Engineers.
The Army Corps of Engineers said, don't go ahead with this project.
By the county.
I'm saying, the Army Corps of Engineers said, don't go ahead with this project.
That's what they told the county, but they, uh, where it's at.
Well, these, all these things in the E Course Creek are just Band-Aids. And twenty years ago, this could have been done for like seventy million dollars and it was, is put off. And then ten years ago, it was a hundred and ten million. And then five years ago, it was two hundred million. And there's money out there. We 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 spent millions of dollars. We could have been showing, like I said before, showing the federal government. That we are serious and would start some kind of clearing the property, saying, hey, listen, it might be three hundred million, but we need, we need help. Our residents for fifty years, sixty years, thousands and thousands of residents have been suffering. And all we're doing is putting the Band-Aid on it by cleaning the log jams out of the creek. And when it rains. The law laws come back into the creek and cause a jam again. It's not, that's not the problem. It, the problem is, you gotta take care of this water where it comes in Dearborn Heights. We have the ability to stop the flooding. This retention basin, it's proven by the Army Corps of Engineers, will stop the flooding in the south end. But we decided not to go ahead with this project.
No, I don't think that's what was said. I think uh the county told us. Um, now, doesn't close doors. We're not closing doors or giving up on that issue. That's what the county told us. Not the Army or Corps of Engineers communicating with us directly. They communicated with the county. The county informed us.
And Council Chair?
Yes, Council.
Um, I'm sorry, Mayor. Okay, there's, there's also another project that they're working on right now. So the one point five million dollars that we received, well, we didn't receive that the county received last year. Uh, that Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib and Debbie Dingle, when they were here. So they they use that money to actually, uh, they're, they're designing a retention basin. And it's gonna be in a different location. And again, you know, they should have the design, next year, they should have the design already complete. They can't do the massive projects for three hundred million, but they are looking at a, another project, which is about twenty-five million dollars. And again, they're doing, they're doing a design work. They're not studying. They're doing a design and to see where they can put it. And obviously, it's gonna be off of Power Street, the same location where they're gonna do the massive project. But this is uh, again, there's a lot of, lot of stuff going on right now, and I'll keep the council and the residents informed as as we get more data.
Okay. Director, come on up.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanted to announce the kickoff of our summer activity program themed this year altogether now. Saturday, June twenty-fourth, from one to four P M. At Carolyn Candy Library. We will be having an old-school, fun summer cookout. Uh, it's gonna include an inflatable obstacle course, grilled halal and veggie food, kids' book sale, a three-legged race, a dunk tank, cotton candy, and much more. So come on out. Also, June nineteenth will be start, I'm sorry.
What was it again?
Uh, June twenty-fourth, uh, from one to four at Carolyn Candy Library.
Hold on, one.
Oh, we don't know who's in the dunk tank yet. I'm gonna be one of them. I'm sorry.
That's a same.
Yep.
What time from one to?
One to four. Yep. That's correct.
You usually remind us on email too.
Okay.
I I, no, I I get some of your.
Oh, you do? Okay. All right. Also, June nineteenth will be the start of our summer activity boxes on our website. Residents can sign up for boxes delivered to their homes. Uh, filled with activities and crafts. Um, so that's all. Thanks for your time and see you all at the library.
Thank you.
Anyone next to the. Our clerk, not our Wayne County clerk.
No, not the Wayne County clerk. I'll leave that to Kathy Garrett. Um, good evening. Um, I'm here talking as your clerk, and I wanted to let you know that we're all have an election on August eighth. And in today, in today's mail, when I got home, I received my permanent absentee ballot application. So I just wanted everybody to know that and let you know the different avenues on how you can turn them in, okay? There is a slight change to it this year because, as you know, y'all voted on Proposition Two last November, which were a lot of changes to the voting. And one of them was for a permanent to receive. A permanent, you'd receive a ballot every time. So where it used to be. You were signing up for the application list. You are going to be, if you wanna be on the list, a permanent ballot, so you automatically get a ballot every time. Unfortunately, we're still waiting on a lot of direction from the state. Uh, Deputy Clerk Flamant and I are currently in the Michigan Municipal Clerks Association Conference this week down in Detroit. This morning, we spent the whole morning discussing this, and there's a lot of questions that we're waiting on from the state. So um, there's, you can return your absentee ballot application. You can go to michigan.gov/vote and apply online. It'll take you right there. The League of Women Voters will be having, I believe they reached out to the candidates, and the candidates may have supplied information. Um, that will be outs shortly. Um, their website is voteforoneone.org. So, and the bulk mailing for the absentee ballots is June twenty-ninth. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Um, you had mentioned the festival earlier. I did have a lot of people that I wanted to thank for that. I do know that we had a few glitches this year, um, but I will be working with the chief on hopefully coming up with some avenues that we can um. Make that not happen next year. So that's what we're working on. And um, also, just so everyone knows. Uh, the reason that there wasn't any alcohol was because we had a problem with the vendors and the change in the licensing law that there. Um, is in as far as getting your license. So um, I will have that rectified for next time. Uh, just so you know, Wednesday night was a record-high night um for sales for the Carnival Company. Thursday was too, Friday and Saturday. Uh, Saturday came in just in second place uh to my last year's Saturday. So it was uh really busy that whole week, and then we got to Sunday. Sunday, we got drenched, um, but we had a great jam session under the tent. We just, um. It it was amazing. A lot of the different artists that played during the day, they got up and they played a different song, or they played um uh songs from a different artist. Um, so we had all kinds of uh uh songs going on under the tent. Um, I would like to thank Antonio's, the Building and Maintenance Department, D P W, definitely Chief Hart and the police officers, Chief Brogan and the firemen that worked. Um, we had a lot of volunteers that helped out with the Jubilee. I definitely want to mention them. All of my sponsors um that helped out, council people that sponsored things, um, we had um sponsors from the whole community. I think that we did a record um uh amount that we received from sponsorships this year. We uh redid the way that we asked for sponsors. And um, we were able to get a lot more um from that, so. Yes, yes. Mo uh donated the ice cream for the Jubilee and the seniors loved that. So. But definitely, the last but not least was my staff, who actually put up with me for the last few months. And I definitely could not have done this festival uh by myself. So I want everybody to know. That there was a lot of people involved in this. It wasn't just me, and kudos goes to them because I could not have done it by myself. It's a great undertaking.
I I just wanna, I wanna, I wanna add something there for you, you know, and I wanna just speak to you. A true leader. Leads with those under them and says and recognizes them. So thank you for showing that leadership, bro.
Well, I couldn't do it without them, and I would definitely recognize them as I have every year. Um, getting forward, Nancy mentioned she didn't wanna interfere with Dearborn Heights entertainment. On June twenty-second, we've got the Magic Bus coming. We originally were scheduled for Warren Valley Golf Course. We've moved it to the Canfield Center. Uh, area because um they don't know when they're gonna be doing the parking lots. Uh, we have a lot of activities for the families, kids. And um, that's at eighteen oh one North Beach Daily. It's a free activity, and that's the first of our three summer concert series. Um, in July, we've got the Detour Band, which is a Detroit-area band that does a lot of Motown. Um, and then in August, we have the Reflections, and we're actually part of the Reflections Farewell Tour, which is huge. And I know most of you young people don't know who the Reflections are, but. You will recognize their music when they uh play, if you come to the concert. Trust me.
We should have like, like a Backstreet Boys or something.
Too expensive. That'd eat up my whole budget, but I wouldn't mind that either.
Justin Bieber, something. Michael Jackson.
Hey, were those guys made as funny as Frank Sinatra? Let me see.
So any other, any other administration comments or announcements? Hey, none? We're gonna go ahead and go to public comments next? Whoever wants to come up to speak on public. Yeah. Each person will have three minutes. Please state your name, city, and street.
Hi, Jake Swirple, like the council men- uh, mentioned earlier. Uh, I'm a Dearborn Heights resident. I live on Kinmore. Um, I'm Matthew's, uh, Sergeant Matthew Swirple's son. He uh, he's former retired, he's retired now. Um, I go to Minot State in North Dakota. Uh, I'm double majoring in criminal justice and psychology, and I'm doing a minor in law and legal studies. And I also play football and I wrestle, and I'm an All-American wrestler and a scholar All-American as well.
Wow.
Thank you. Good job. Very good job.
Muggsy, Muggsy, my buddy's a good friend of his. Muggsy loves him. Good wrestling.
Actually, uh, if I'm mistaken, did you coach? Yeah, you coached my son at one point too, didn't you? Was you, okay, brother, okay. He's also a little guy, right?
What year did you graduate from Crestwood?
I got in the high school program, international dance program.
What year did you graduate high school?
Wow, twenty twenty.
All right, next up.
Uh, good evening.
City's street name?
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bazey contacted me and asked for an extra minute, so we have four.
I'm gonna take a minute on my watch, then I'll start the time.
No problem. Oh, I'm gonna say a written statement, so it's gonna take about four minutes, maybe a couple of seconds. So if you don't mind, please, uh. Okay, fine. I'm just a little bit, uh, I lost a cousin today for cancer, so I was supposed to speak and her, you know, I like to come here first and uh.
One second. Let's take a moment of silence for you, just in case.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Hassan Bazey, uh, Sheehan Drive, um, Dearborn Heights. And thanks for the time that you granted me, uh, Mr. Abdullah. Mr. Bill Bazey, the mayor, Mr. Dave Abdullah, president of the council, distinguished members of council, ladies and gentlemen. I stand before you this evening as a proud resident of this beautiful, vibrant city to share with you some thoughts and impressions about a recent matter that. and impressions about a recent matter that raises legitimate questions about the function of an important part of our local government. In the interest of time, I'm going to get to the point right away. Last Thursday, June 8th, I had the misfortune to of attending the meeting of the Planning Commission where I had to witness the most disorganized, short-sighted dictatorial proceeding of any kind. Some of you were there. And without the need to embarrass any of you, they can bear witness to the accuracy of my account. I attended the meeting out of concern for a good business opportunity in our community where a local businessman who is proven and well-respected in the city has an investment proposal that will bring some needed employment and public revenues. It was the second appearance for the gentleman and his associate who petitioned the committee for a permit to occupy an empty lot, but were dismissed in a questionable way. Occupy in a questionable way for the first time. This second time was not a charm either. We found out that they submitted, they submitted the documents that the committee had asked for, did not make it true to be considered. And that was used as justification to dismiss the application again. And so matter where Blanant and the chair did not allow the applicants who had their legal team in attendance to present their case. I'm not a lawyer to speak of the legality of the chair's decision. But as a concerned resident who somewhat involved in our issues, I question the legality of the commission, which the majority of its members were appointed by the mayor, but did not have the consent of your esteemed council. To my knowledge, Section 23-29 of the city charter states the following starts. "The city planning commission shall consist of nine members who will be appointed by the mayor, subject to the approval by a majority vote of the city council, who shall represent in so far as possible, different professions or occupations. The appointed members shall hold no other municipal office except that one of such appointed members may be a member of the zoning board of appeals ends." As far as I know, no such approval was granted by council. Thus, all the decisions of the commission are not legitimate. Ladies and gentlemen, the alphabet of public responsibility dictates that we should put the public interest first and that requires a broad vision and fair treatment and professional conduct. And I am sorry to tell that the commission in its present compensation lacks the very basic of those elements and lacks diversity. And it's easy to see a lot of nepotism, favoritism, patronage, and pre-parential treatment, not only in selecting the members, but also in the way they conduct business. Please allow me to share a little piece of history of Arab-Americans in the area. Not a lot of people know how a racist mayor, a racist mayor in our sister city Dearborn weaponized the zoning committee there against Arab-Americans in the South End, but he was sued and lost. As a proof that even strong men can lose in a nation of laws. And we are a nation of laws and thank God, we do have elections where we are not jerked around by some rookie novice in the, who is thirsty for power and undeserved recognition. Thank you. I appreciate it. And thanks for not calling the cops on us.
Any other, come on up.
But anyway, good evening. My name is Nadia and I live on Kingswood Drive. I'm here to address an issue that I'm pleading with everyone on the council to maybe look into the situation at John Daley and Ford Road. We have an issue with the entry into Starbucks. Somebody's going to get killed at that corner. I had to sit through five lights the other day. I called the police department, non-emergency. Unfortunately, they, they said that somebody was out there and that somebody would handle it. What's happening is they're turning into Starbucks off of Ford Road or off of East and West and they're sticking out onto Ford Road as the lights turning. So if you're turning, you're in a death trap. It's coming right at you. You're going to have to make a decision here. You're either going to have to close that first drive and they're coming out illegally. Somebody's going to get killed at that, at that point. And I've talked to a couple of council people before and it's gotten to the point that it's crazy. I beg my children not to even turn at that corner. Okay? And I live in a subdivision. There's no reason for me to have to avoid coming into my own subdivision. Okay? So something really needs to be done and I say enough is enough before somebody really gets hurt. Okay?
Miss Berry, Miss Berry, Nadia, Nadia.
Yes.
I too live in that subdivision.
I know you do.
And I don't go down John Daley there. I avoided like the plane.
So do I.
And then your traffic light on Ford Road and going.
Yeah, I was going to say, can you please put a traffic light going at the Starbucks?
Well, the crazy thing is, is there's, the light is there, but I think we just got to start putting signs up even, even down.
The signs are not working.
Further, well, nobody reads signs and I was going to say that, but no, no standing or parking along Ford Road or John Daley at that point. I don't know what else to do.
I'll tell you what to do. Close off the first driveway.
Well.
Before somebody gets hurt.
When I first went to the planning commission meetings, and I'm going to say this, I went to those planning commission meetings. That drive, that drive through was supposed to be on the other side of the building. It was supposed to use the southernmost entrance to exit. And that got changed and I don't know how that got.
Well, then it needs to be like that because I'm telling you, we've had a couple of accidents there, major accidents, but when somebody gets killed.
People give you the finger when they're turning and it's just amazing.
I mean, there's no reason for anybody to have to sit at a traffic light for five lights to get into your own subdivision.
Go across the street to go, to go to the, into the shopping mall.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with Mrs. Berry on this. Are we waiting for somebody to die?
Somebody's, you've had two major accidents that I know of. Thank God I was out of town. I think somebody was actually killed there a couple of years ago to be.
No, it was a real accident. About 40 yards down.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Nadia. Appreciate it. Come on up. City's street name, please.
Hi, everybody. Sukaminsky, I'm Woody, Dearborn Heights. Just a few things. I'm thrilled about the three new officers. I have been very vocal about not having enough officers. We're still 31 down. That's my count. I may be wrong, but 34 minus three, I think we're 31 down. So I, I hope this trend continues. I want to see us surpass where we were because our population has increased, so we need to keep going. My other question is, I saw the cement companies still doing some work in the streets. Is it the same cement company? Is someone watching them? Because I've not seen any gravel near where they were working. I happened to be in Trenton today. They're doing some work in my son's subdivision and they had huge piles of pea gravel. And I haven't seen the same kinds of problems as the pea gravel kind of caused because it was blocking the street. But regardless, you need to put the pea gravel down first and I'm certainly not a civil engineer. So I wondered if it's the same company, if somebody's supervising them, where are we at with that?
It is, it is the same company. Administration could probably speak better than me on that. I personally seen firsthand where there was a supervisor on behalf of the city standing over them while they were doing work.
Okay.
And if you're not an engineer, I'm even below that.
I'm not close.
It looked right, but I'm not the end all be all. I had to ask one of the city administrators who was overseeing the project and he said, yes, what is being done is done correctly. And I spoke with the supervisor over there. Again, I'm not the end all. I just wanted to just give my own, my own peace of mind. It seemed to be going the right direction and, and they did say the supervisor, Mr. Jamal from the city, did say they checked all the different spots that they have done. So he did. Go here, Jamal.
Okay. I just, you know, I want to be fiscally responsible and make sure the city doesn't spend an extra money on tearing streets up and putting it back in.
And there's an additional item I should answer you. I called and spoke with the director of the Building Department, Botland, had a long conversation with them about it. And without getting into the details, because I don't want to be the one that announces these, it's administrations. But there is some on the radar that's going to be announced. I don't know when, but pretty soon in regards to this, in regards to checking all the different spots. So it is on at least two directors radars. I did see them out compacting today on the way here on Midway. I would think they would have used a larger compactor, but they were out there compacting the soil.
Was there pea gravel?
Yes, there was. There was, there was the, the aggregate was put down and they were compacting it. Again, that's here and there and I'm going to leave that into Mr. Waitland and, and Ali Deeb's hands. And I've been in contact with them over this a few different times. So we are looking into it and being diligent and I've been going out myself and I, matter of fact, people have seen me with my tape measure out there measuring the depth of, you know, going around and, you know, without having a laser, it's kind of hard, but, or a straight edge.
Right. Now I get it.
But I'm, I'm measuring to see if we're getting our seven inches of concrete.
Right.
Guys. And I did address with the, with the supervisor. He was making kind of a complaint about one resident. They had originally brought this to our council and brought it to our attention. And he mentioned, you know, about taking photographs and following run, whatever. And I gave him the answer that I always give people. If you've got nothing to worry about, you're welcome to come in. You know, any resident can come in and take as many pictures as they want. That's their right. They're paying the fees. If you're doing something wrong, then you got a problem with it. If you're not doing anything wrong, then at that point, you shouldn't worry about it.
Right.
So I'm okay with residents checking, but not interfering.
I agree. I just want all of you to know, while I don't always agree with all of your thought processes. No names, no names, Ray. But I just want to thank you for what you do. As someone who serves the public, I understand how hard it is. I know sometimes it seems to me like Mr. Wensel gets discounted. So as somebody who lived in the South Side, I was at this body, none of you were here. Bob might have been here in 1977.
Yeah.
Flooding on the South Side. So unless you've lived it, unless you've experienced, you know, you've all had your basement flood maybe once or twice. Unless this is how your lives are dictated, you don't get it. I lived on Indianapolis. I moved out of the South Side because I was there and stuck in my house for six days with water up to my porch between American folk and somebody down the street had a heart attack and you can check records. And the Dearborn Heights Fire Department used a blow-up boat to get this man out of a home. It's ridiculous and nobody in this city should live that way. So I don't want you to discount when people are talking about the severity of Ekor's Creek. If you haven't lived it, you don't get it. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
City's street name, please. I've been waiting all day to know what's in that box, box.
Can I dump it on your desk?
You can. No, bring it.
Angela Venegas, White Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. That's for council and for our corporate council. That's just an information packet on sycamore trees, their lifespan, how dirty they are, the damage they do to sewage systems, everything. In my little box here before I came, this is just my driveway from overnight from sycamore trees. If any of yous have a sycamore tree, this is a daily cleaning. I spend hours every day cleaning my house. I don't want it filthy, dirty. I have a dog. The sycamore trees have these little seed pods and they're like needles.
Do you piss it around?
Yeah. The leaves fall.
I'm allergic to that stuff.
Yeah, leaves fall all year long, summer, winter. They peel bark. They're dirty. They're disgusting. You can't park, I can't park my tree, even in my, the bottom part of my driveway. When I have company, everybody fights them where we're going to park. Everybody's up the driveway to the garage. You can't park in the street. Your cars get damaged. My brother had a vehicle that was two days old parked in my driveway and had a dent in his hood. They're disgusting, dangerous. And for the, this list that supposedly exists in the city, I've lived in my house for 23 years. Twice I've had to replace my sidewalk because of the city tree. I paid $800 to trim the tree away from my house. I've almost have $3,000 invested in a tree that's not mine to try to keep my property looking decent. I was going to pay to have the tree cut this summer. Went to get my permit and they told me I needed another $350 to put into a tree fund. It's a win-win for the city and us residents are suffering. It's, it's, it's a bad situation and I just wish somebody would do something.
Don't forget the dog stepping on the needles.
Oh, yeah. My dog. Had taken to the vet, almost on my way to emergency vet. He's limping and he has the needles from the, the seed pods embedded up in his paw. It's, it's dangerous. The kids can't, you can't even walk barefoot. You don't enjoy your yard. I can't sit out on my patio. My deck is littered with it. We had all this rain Sunday. I was out at seven o'clock at night because my husband's working on a ladder, cleaning out my gutters because it's all impacted with the seeds.
I got a question, Council Chair. Real quick, Mary, maybe can we, can we get somebody from DPW just to take this tree down?
Mo, I appreciate that. There's seven in five houses. We have seven of them.
Okay. Can we get these seven trees taken down?
They're, they're huge. I have sent you, I sent you videos. The branches fall like crazy.
I've taken the time to look at those trees that she has. I've looked at the, the danger to the telephone wires and other trees.
These are the sycamore trees up in front.
Yeah, I know. Those I, and the ground and the sidewalk that they've destroyed. But there's, there's other issues as well that we're going to try to pull, pull eight and put together to deal with. The trees in front of your yard, but also the wires and other trees in the city that have the same problems.
So guys, so Corporation Council, can you tell us, what do you think potentially the solution here is? I mean, this lady comes here. I mean, every week it complains about a sycamore tree. I didn't even know what a sycamore tree is. I feel, I feel like I'm becoming a tree specialist.
When I went to the DPW department, he didn't, he didn't even know, he didn't even know that they had the balls on it. It was news to him. He, he never even knew about the balls that fly everywhere.
Who's that?
Director Conrad. He had no idea that they even had the little seed pods. He didn't remember.
As I said, I've gone to the location.
It's like a snowstorm.
I've gone to the location personally, look at the tree, look at the sidewalk. I've walked to the back of the yard.
Yep.
Seen the, the danger.
He has.
Telephone wires. We're working on contacting Corp Counsel, DTE. And we will talk with Mr. Conrad so we can get a full plan of the issue.
So we, we are working. Yeah, was it two years ago or so?
About three years ago, yeah.
And it was like that. Look, I could tell you something. Corporation Council went out to your house. I respect that. Honest to God, the fact.
No, I mean, Dave's been out there.
I mean, I've seen you, I've seen you walk and I've never been there. Nice house, man.
My house is immaculate and it kills me every day that after I get off of work, it's starting at four in the morning.
A couple of realtors in here.
Three hours cleaning up my house. It's ridiculous. And they're dangerous. My hellman wears a herd hat when he walks.
But these, yeah, these are the seeds here. I, I did maintenance at the St. Sebastian Church in the, on the South End and they've got dozens of these trees on their property. And they're not just balls. They, they come apart.
Yeah.
And they, and they fog up the sewers.
What's it doing to your health, too, breathing it?
This leaf right here she brought, this is hilarious because the leaves on those trees get to be this big. And when they fall in the, in the, in the fall, they are getting, they, one leaf will cover almost a whole sewer in a rainstorm. Those leaves are huge.
Well, that's another issue. I have two, I have the storm drain in front of my house that I kept to keep clean and the one across the street because they don't do it.
And one, one thing she failed to mention up is they, they shed their bark.
Yep.
The bark, yeah, year round. The bark just falls off these trees literally all year, every day, all year long. They're terrible trees. Other than that, they're fine.
No, they're not. And the Spirit Fest, Summer Fest, I wasn't there, but I heard about the trouble. And I just think that our police chief should have stayed here. I'm sure a lot of residents have questions. I'd like to know what's being done to the kids who created all the trouble.
He is still here. I did speak with him. He's working on something in the back, but he is still in the building.
Yep. Somebody should be here then to represent him, to give residents information on what happened, who was arrested, what's going to be done. Because we don't need this next year. You know, transparency, we just should be informed of stuff. So.
The only thing is, I'm going to comment on that. It's not, not back and forth, but let's also keep things in perspective. You know, a fight at a, at a carnival, not okay, but not that uncommon. I mean, I, at one point, I'm old now, but I at one point was young. And when you go to festivals, carnivals, every once in a while, you'll see a stupid teenage fight break out. It does happen. It's not good. I'm against it. No, I'm not going to go back and forth. Just to be fair, but it does happen. He was six foot tall when I was, something went like this to him. He was the guy getting beat up. I was the one being, getting beat up. That's why I look like this.
So he wasn't a lover, huh?
All right. I'm, I'm have, Vince, come on up.
Real quick. Columbia Street. Earlier today, I, I got an email like I do. Columbia Street earlier today, I, uh, I got an email like I do all the time from the Department of Natural Resources regarding tree programs. That program is in cooperation with DTE for funding for trees, for city parks, landscaping, city parks. And um, walkways or bike, bikeways. Also, I want to bring up, why doesn't somebody contact Michigan State Forestry? And see if they have any grant funding or companies available that will come out here and take out these trees for little to no cost. Michigan State University can come out here, give you the idea, give you solutions. Just call them. All right. Uh, and also regarding our grant for the uh, gas company or whatever. You know, maybe call those companies up and find out why they didn't bid on those. Because there's been several bids that I've been involved in. And if you don't get a response, obviously there's something wrong with the way the package is written. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vince. Council Chair, I just got one quick question and maybe it's for Corporation Council to somebody, but let's, let's, let's spend, you know, we, we have a pretty large budget. Why don't we spend a hundred thousand dollars and knock out all these trees? I mean, if it's gonna cost you five thousand dollars a tree and there's seven on half, two in front of the mayor, I mean, knock them out.
Well, just a hundred thousand won't do it because each tree, even if you get the cheapest contractor and I've had.
You just said thirty-five hundred dollars.
Multiplied by a lot.
Okay, spend a hundred thousand dollars.
Listen, there's not on my mind, two things that need to be looked at in the next budget. One is trees and then the other one is roads.
Our tree ordinance needs to be looked at. You guys.
Okay, let's, let's let the lady, come on.
As you guys know, I'm King. I've been here, um, Dearborn Heights, Mayfair Street. Um, I'm a friend of the family of Joey Smith that he lost his life on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. I have several pictures. I made a poster board to get it in everybody's face and how important this is that it needs to be done. Um, I can pass it around afterwards, but this is the corner that Joey lost his life. This is where you're supposed to stop. There's no crosswalk, white lines at all. Um, here is Eaton, the corner that I used to work. And you can't see the paint. This is ridiculous. This is what I have, one, one of the reasons we've been asking is to help with the stop signs so you can see them at night. You can clearly see that it is visible, more visible with that on there. Here's another intersection, no school signs. School zones will save children's lives if they are safe. Ours are not. I had filled out a form with a few questions that I had asked. I have not heard anything back. There is a few things that was said at the last city council meeting on May twenty-third. I wanna get more information and ask a few more questions. I have been told since I have been trying to get this situation to become a solution regarding the safety around our schools. Question one, what does it mean when said? It has been in the works. Question number two, has it, has it been started? And question three, can we receive updates? Council, Councilman Hassan said at the last city council meeting on May twenty-third that he wanted some type of cable TV, cable television show to update us residents to see what is the new, uh, uh, new businesses going on. And that the city council is doing for the city. My personal opinion, not businesses, but I would love to see the city council, things that our city council does for our city and the communities such as protecting our children around our schools, especially after a young child lost his life.
Can we, can we take a ten second?
I'm sorry.
Fifteen seconds, okay. Fifteen second moment of silence, please. God rest his soul.
Lost his life eight months ago, well, eight months as of tomorrow, and we still see nothing about it has been done. The time with the, uh, about exceptions of Tom Wensel's Jamie's Five Kids. Thank you again, Tom. He's the one that put this up at Joey's site. Jamie's Five Kids did. These simple changes that the family and friends of our beloved Joey has been asking the city to get done in a timely matter after we lost Joey on October fourth, two thousand twenty-two. And we sit here eight months, a day shy of eight months with nothing done. Well, it is something that has, I hope and pray that each and every one of you up there sitting never endures this pain and tragedy. We want changes and we want them now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask a question. Wait, I'm gonna ask a question to maybe Mayor Administration, maybe Corporate Chief of Staff. Can we maybe allocate some ARPA money towards this? Because I, 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 I'm gonna tell you honestly, it is taking a while to have had changes done. If not ARPA money, can we allocate some DPW workers to go out and do this? If not that, can we get some paint and paint the damn things? I mean, something's gotta be done. I, 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 I do agree this thing's just dragging out. So can, can we put that as a top radar item?
Chief of Staff, I, I will tell you, uh, I know this was brought up, you know, and I, you know, God rest his soul, Joey Smith. But then even before Joey Smith, I know there were residents that were complaining and the what time, the, the argument was the roads are too cold. Well, the temperature is hot enough right now. Why aren't we painting crosswalks? Get DPW to go out and just paint them. It's, that's all it's gonna take. I mean, ki, do, are, do we not have the capability of doing so?
And I'm okay with subcontracting it out. That's what we have to do. Let's do what we need.
But no, no jokes, something as early as tomorrow needs to have these across all the schools, by the way.
Yeah.
Not, not just one or two or three, just to set us up. Guys, hang on one second, please. Every single school across the city, even if it's neighboring or this is part of the word, who cares? Hit it up. Just touch it up. I mean, it's enough.
We also put. I'm sorry, Councilman Wensel, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair. I know the young lady had three questions and um, the first one was the, she said that she said there's something in the works. Can, can we answer her question? What is in the works and how far along is it?
I, I'm just gonna say, I, in all due respect, and you know, my heart, you know, having eight kids of my own, my heart goes out to them. Um, I know I, on information and belief, there is a, a lawsuit pending. So I would just ask us to refrain from discussing that, but I thought we started a, um, a safety uh, meetings and I, I don't know if, if, if we followed up with it. I haven't heard anything else from the first two meetings. But uh, I know it happened at the Justice Center. I think we should continue those meetings, get people back together. Keep it away from the lawsuit, but deal with the issues that are legitimately being raised.
It was uh, Chief Hart, Chief Hart and Director Ali Deep that were working on it. What's, what's in the works?
We need to just to, to follow what the Councilman is saying. Uh, I think we need to re, make sure it's restarted and, and, and progressive.
Well, I, I don't even, I don't even.
Well, hang on for a second.
The, the young lady wanted to know, she had a question, three questions. And the one, first one is what's, what's in the works? That we've been hearing. What, what's in the works and how far along is it? Who's the question? Uh, the, the, like I mentioned, Councilman Wensel, the two that are working on this, the ones that are directing it is Director Ali Deep, who's on vacation today. As far as I know, he's not back yet. Yeah. And uh, Chief Hart is the other person.
Is our DPW director on here?
Is it a secret project going on?
No, it just so happens, no, I mean, but to be fair, it was not anticipated this was gonna be brought up, so they're not here to be able to answer the question.
Okay.
We can, Council Chair.
One second. This is, this is something, this is something that should be known and it's only been a year.
Okay. Can, can we do this? Can we do this? Uh, ma'am clerk? Can, I know it's a little bit early and I know I'm supposed to call you with this maybe tomorrow, but can you put a note that on the next agenda items or next city council meeting to have the two direct, uh, I'm sorry, the police chief and Director Ali Deep to give us an update as to the school zone, restriping, repainting, whatever different agenda items.
Crossing guards.
Well, whatever, whatever stuff, I, you know, we're not gonna be commenting on the specifics. They're handling that themselves. If you could add on a, agenda, please.
Councilman, just one last.
Councilman Beadun and Councilman Muscat.
One last thing, and Mariana, I'm so sorry that, I don't mean to, I know you're busy. Uh, but can you keep us an up, update with tomorrow with the DPW director? If they're gonna go out and actually paint these things tomorrow? And if they can't, uh, how can we go out to subcontract these? Because I can tell you right now, I can name you ten people that will come out and paint them at, even at no cost. Uh, so please, can you give us an update and email on that tomorrow for every single school? Kenla, Ivy, Polk, Annapolis, every single one of them. Please, can you do that? Or you can't? No, no, but can you give me an update on one? Well, I mean, it doesn't have to be done tomorrow. Something done in a week.
Ten billion dollars for someone to give you.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Councilman Muscat is next. Go ahead.
Council Chair, thank you. Thank you. A while back when we first started this also, um, I, I made a suggestion that we put up signs that fines doubled. There is no, uh, going in front of the magistrate, say, I've never done it. I got a clean record. You see the school. I mean, a school is as visible as visible can be. And if you decide you're doing forty miles an hour, and you know what a, a lot of the problem is? Is some of the people that actually are picking up their kids are the ones that are. Yeah, but, but what I'm saying is, i- is some of the people that are picking up their own kids, they even load their kids up on the street side of the car and it's not even on the driver's side of the car. Why would you take a small child and go out into the street and try to load them like that when everybody's going back and forth? Signs, nobody pays a temptation. Nobody reads the doggone signs. People forgot how to drive. Coming here tonight, I want to make a left-hand turn onto Lafayette, going eastbound on Ford Road. Somebody turns from the Dearborn side going west and they're using the left-hand turn lane as a merging lane. And they're blowing the horn at me. They're turning a legal turn. I want more signage put up. We should have school zones on, on the street itself. They do that in a lot of places, okay? Signs, fines are doubled. No more going to the magistrate. Give them the damn ticket. Let them pay the insurance fine on it. And that's, hit them again, just like Blake, hit them in the damn pocketbook, okay? Until people go to the front of the magistrate and they get off with a, a hundred and fifty dollar fine, yeah, it's a hundred and fifty bucks. But they're getting away with murder on their license and their insurances.
Okay.
No more.
Council Chair, just so. Yeah, I just wanted to mention that. Thank you for putting on the agenda because the last update we got from Mr. Deep, the, the paint was on back order, but that was early this year.
Yeah.
By now, we should have it by now, so.
Okay.
Well, I mean, on the agenda that way, I can have something solid. Come on up, sir.
City's street name, please.
Thank you. Charles Bonds at fifty-seven thirty Silvery Lane, Dearborn Heights. Um, first of all, my issue would seem trivial, trivial compared to the issue before me. But prior to that, thank you, Mr. Swirpool for being a, growing up from your little Raider days. He's, he's, he's a little bit bigger. I don't think you make the weight limit anymore. Nonetheless, um, I'm here tonight, um, over, um, an issue with my dog. Uh, I have a dog that's licensed with the, the city. Um, and we talked about ordinances. We talked about bad apples today. I think there's one running around the city. Um, my significant other walks the dog down around the city hall quite often. Um, and this ordinance officer harasses her when she comes down here. Um, last week, when she was down here, the officer was sitting in the parking lot over here to avoid a confrontation. She went back on the other side of the park. He got in his car, drove around, was in the parking lot over there on, on, on Silvery Lane. Um, today, uh, the thirteenth, eleven thirty, he wrote a, a correction reminder. And telling us that the dog's license has expired. Please, um, I could pull my glasses, you know, meet with the clerk, you know, Office of City Hall. Here's a screenshot from, I believe it's PSNA, the business or the, the dog licenses. This dog has had a license. This year on one twenty-four, twenty-three. Um, I've had dogs for more than a decade. They've always had licenses. For an ordinance officer, a week later, telling them to come up to a citizen's house. And I don't even know how he knows where, where we live, unless he's stalking her. Never, he, she never produced ID. Never looked at the, the dog's license. It's license number four fifteen. And he came down a week later and was harassing her again with this ticket. Um, that's a, an ordinance officer of our city coming up to our citizens. And he couldn't do his due diligence and we've had the license since January. Um, it's, it's unacceptable behavior. Um, anybody wants to talk to me, they can reach me through the clerk's office.
Yeah, don't say. Right. So what I'd like you to do, if you're my coach, if you could give your name and number uh, to the, wait there, to George right next to the clerk. Still have maybe the ordinance director contacting and try to clear up this.
Well, there was a phone call earlier, said he would call back and he did not call back.
Okay, well, at this point, Director Dishroom, can you please make sure you contact the coach back tomorrow? And George will have the name and phone number for you. If you could email it to him, please. So if you wanna give it to George.
Thank you.
Online now.
I know, but we don't want to discuss specific.
It involves a particular ordinance officer and I think this has gone on for some time. I'm in a public forum. I'm not gonna disclose what it is, but his behavior like that's a liability to the city.
Okay, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Come on up. City's street name, sir.
Mike Mackey, North Martha, Dearborn Heights. I also want to thank the Summer Festival for tearing up my grass, trashing my property. The city should be held to a higher standard than its residents. My restroom, my indoor restrooms were used non-stop. My business was closed or limited to about twenty percent. Of course, if we use the outside bathrooms, I'd have to pay the water bill. Um, last year I had a food tent at the Sphere Festival. This year, it was only for nonprofits. But obviously, food tent was given for vendors with profit, for profit. How long is the discrimination and harassment gonna continue against me? Are you guys gonna do anything about it? Or you just gonna let it keep happening? I'm asking for paration on my rent back for the two weeks that my place got destroyed. That DPW from last year hasn't came out and fixed it yet. I'm also, you guys had a close session. I wanna know where I stand with my rent abatement. And I want you guys to vote on it right now.
What are you talking about?
So, Councilman. I paid twenty-nine thousand dollars in permit fees when I built Elite Sports. Twenty-nine thousand dollars. Why don't you go look what other people in this city pay to build places that cost millions of dollars? Okay? My sprinkler guy put in a sprinkler. I didn't know he didn't pull a permit. I went back and pulled it years later. I'm sick and tired and I'm done giving. I'm done giving. I'm sick of, I mean, you, police and fire use my place, use the baseball field, no problem. But I'm done giving. So there's obviously some issues. I asked you guys to work them out. You have it. Corporation Council has been mute for months. Okay? What's it gonna take? What are we doing? Council Chair, do I have to pay the rent abatement that was given to me during COVID? Yes or no?
I cannot make a decision on it.
Put a motion on the floor right now and vote on it. Just button the rules and vote on it.
Okay, uh, obviously, although we can do that, we have no information.
You can do it. You have information. There was a special meeting regarding it. It was discussed at length. That special meeting was probably inappropriate, okay? There was no litigation and then we are negotiating in good faith.
Right.
Okay? So I don't even know if that special meeting was allowed.
Let's be clear that we have communicated with his attorney.
I know. I don't wanna hear it. It's my time. When I'm not talking, you can speak. I'm sick and tired of it. Not gonna let you run me over. Not gonna let you run me over anymore. It's been months since the corporation attorneys got back to my attorney. It's been months. Ask them.
Council chair.
One one second. That's a corporation counsel.
Be able to reply back. Like to reply back?
Respond. We've been waiting for his attorney to get the information requested, which is, did he get COVID nineteen funds? To cover the period of time if we give him an abatement? If he's not producing documentation, once he produces the documentation, we can see if he goes, he doesn't wanna double double dip, correct? That's what we talked about in this.
Do you have access to go on the website and see if I got COVID nineteen funds? Okay, obviously, Councilman Muscat came and asked me that, and I did not receive for Elite Sports any P P E money or COVID funds.
Okay.
Council chair.
Council one, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mackey is 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 a valuable asset to our community and. He he is being treated. He pays his own insurance on his property. And uh he he's in the same situation as the the concessionaire at the golf course. And the city of Dearborn Heights pays the insurance on the golf course. And so that's that, that's one thing right there of not not being treated fairly. And if you treat one, you should treat this the others the same way, either way, do it the right way. And um I'd like to take, make a motion to suspend suspend the rules. And we can take a vote on this whether to to uh to suspend his uh two months of rent during COVID, which we talked about. And they can make a motion to suspend the rules.
Council chair. I I was here when we did this abatement. Um, a- a- all of us were, I don't think Mo Baydun or Councilman Baydun or Hassan was here. And uh I I know we gave him an abatement, okay? And regardless of. What's going on, we did, and we did talk about this in other meetings. And I don't know how. And I I I'm and I know we gave it to him, so I'm not backing down from that.
There's a motion with the clerk's office. It's on video of a meeting.
I'm I'm not, I'm I'm not going to back down from that because we did. And matter of fact, I think it was kind of somewhat my idea a little bit. Um, because of COVID. And uh, I think if we get some information from Corporation Council. On what is going on. And then I think we should be have something on the agenda for the next council meeting. To look at, look into this and take a vote because I I I don't wanna just jump into this with both feet and land in a fire pit. Okay, and uh but I I do remember that, and I'm standing by my vote on it. The record shows that I voted for it, and I I believe it was a unanimous vote.
It was. But the mayor seconded.
Yeah.
Just for the record.
Yeah, but so but I I'd like for Corporation Council to come forward with more information, Mr. Mackey. And and you know, I'm I'm.
Thank you.
I'm trying to be as fair as I possibly can.
I've taken a lot, Ray. Taken it, and I got one more thing. There's an outside bathroom. Parks and Recs uses the bathroom for two years. They don't supply toilet paper. They don't supply soap. The park, the whole city uses the outside bathroom. Parks and Recs employee left the bathroom unlocked the day they used it. The toilet ran seven hundred and thirteen units. Mariana thinks that I'm responsible for paying that bill. The mayor's assistant thinks I'm responsible for paying that bill. You're not running me over. I promise you.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Mackey, just to be fair.
She's not running me over.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mackey.
And this is how we treat our our fine star citizens, Dearborn Heights. That's a shame, you know, and we cater the others. It's just ridiculous. Good evening again.
Council chair, there was, um, Councilman Wenzel did motion to suspend the rules.
You make an official motion?
Yeah, I did. I mean.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion sus- motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Wenzel, seconded by Councilman Baydun. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
I'm a no. I don't think we have enough information right now to make a decision.
I think the decision was already made. Council chair, you have plenty of decision, and if you had it.
Are we voting on?
Suspend the rules, and it had to be another motion made based on whatever proposal one council member makes.
Okay, Dave Abdallah.
No.
Hassan Amad.
Yes.
Mo Baydun.
Yes.
Nancy Brier.
Yes.
Robert Conston.
No.
Ray Muscat.
Yes.
Tom Wenzel.
Yes.
Motion here.
So next item, okay, Ray, who's gonna be made? Is somebody is somebody making a motion? Well, no, no, this was just under rules. Now we wonder what the motion would be, and then we'd have a discussion, and then we'd have a vote on.
Council chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
I wanna make a motion that we abide by our previous decision to abate the two months rent.
It's it it was until. I got my certificate of. And the state, the government, let me open up. That was not the agreement.
Yeah, that was the agreement.
The power. One second, Councilman Wenzel. Issue motion. Corporation Council, you have it up to the speak, but please no interruptions.
Yeah.
Please no interruption.
I think we we if Councilman Muscat can refresh my memory, I I we did. Abate the rent until the certificate accuracy or the the state allowed him to open up during COVID. And I I believe it was it was two months, and how many how many months did you reclose, Mr. Mackey?
Approximately eight to nine months.
Eight to nine months he was closed. He hasn't for two months to run the payment.
No, it's more than that. I'm asking for the whole thing.
Yes, for eight eight months?
Yes.
One second, one second. Well, this is something maybe we should look, I mean, I'm. I'm I'm willing to give it to him because every other business, I mean, we're 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 spending our harp of money on everything but for what it is meant for. Uh, for the people that suffered during COVID, and this is something that this man, he if anyone deserves. Um, I got a quick question.
I got the video here. Whenever you're ready.
One second, let him finish.
Anyway, um. Well, I think about this now. The the amount of what's that? If any anybody needs help on a motion there, we always last. So what what are you gonna say?
Well, probably, it's not that, you know, I I think everybody here wants to see the right thing to happen, right? But I also don't wanna do is just put a motion on here just to throw a motion that we don't know. So so let's also be cautious about how we put this on because kind of like Dave Abdullah said there, Council Chair said. Let's be refreshed. We don't wanna jump into a pot of fire and not know what we're going on. Look, I'm gonna tell you right now where I stand on it. If 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 that baby was happening before I got on here, and now we're trying to go back and and and, you know, charge, uh, you know, the, you know, the. The man leasing on it, I'm not for that, and you I could tell you right now, you have my support of that. Okay, I'll make my motion.
Resolution on there.
I'll change my motion to.
Just one at a time.
I'm gonna change my.
So let him finish it. Are you done?
Yeah.
Yeah, what you were saying?
Well, I'm just saying, let's just be.
I know.
I'm gonna change my motion to um put the. The situation with Elite Sports abated Brent on the next meeting's agenda. Uh, following information that Mr. Mackey can uh can supply us and the administration.
Support.
That's it, that's it. Motion made by Councilman Wenzel to add this on next.
But we already have.
Council meetings agenda, not on this, not on this. No, we had the motion just to suspend the rules. Now you made a motion.
Proper information.
Yeah, proper information.
That's what I said.
Yeah. I did on next week's agenda, okay? Seconded by. Councilman Baydun, okay? Any discussion on this, and then you're gonna be next to speak. Any discussion on this, Councilman Conston?
Well, uh, you know, we had a gentleman here uh before about the trees. We have Mr. Florenzi is the last name who's been. Here many times about his neighbor's trees. There's, you know, the way with the way for us to conduct business. And there was a close session on this, and it is negotiation. I'm familiar with the situation. Um, this is no way to conduct business and make a decision. Uh, that somebody just gets up, uh, again, we're gonna have, you know, half the vendors with the city here. Um, coming up and saying at the last minute, you know, uh, uh, this is a issue involving a lot of money. City money, and um we just wanna make the right decision and and have it. Uh, uh, able to look at it previously before we vote on. Now, for voting to put it on the next agenda. And we have to give our Corporation Council time to look at, uh, you know, the the records and so forth and give us. A factual information. That's something different. That's something different, but um as far as, you know, I've been a lawyer for thirty-two years. As far as someone to say, your lawyer hasn't called me. I mean, that that's that's like famous. Lawyers are famous for not returning phone calls. And I I uh have to say that I um I know Mr. Mackey's attorneys and. Um, I have not had good past experience with them.
Any other comments?
For that statement, he should recuse himself when he's voting on anything. That's a personal attack.
Council, one second. Can you please add on the next? I understand, no, but either way. Can you please add it on the next agenda? On next. Next Tuesday, not this Tuesday.
I think the city should be very fair and constant in the way they treat their tenants. So I I mean, I would like the my lease to be like the other leases similar in the city to reflect that.
Okay, yeah, Mike, I'm sorry, way past. So thank you. Uh, I I do wanna make a statement. I think Elite Sports is a great organization, and and and, you know, I I respect Mr. Mike Mackey a lot. But I don't wanna make a decision on behalf of the residents right here, just on drop of a ball. Everybody's had their turn here multiple times, okay? I respect my decision that I made when I made it.
Yeah.
Okay, and but I still wanna be able to be fair to our Corporation Council.
Yep.
To give him time to gather the paperwork, and I want it at a. Not dragging this out for months. We need it two, three weeks at the most. Send it to us, have a uh have another meeting about it, and we can hash this out. But again, like I said, I'm sticking by my vote, and that's just the way it is because we already done this.
You've done it.
We done it, okay? And now let's get some more information from you, and I I was going to put a proposal now. But he beat me kind of to it about the bathroom outside there. If we're gonna do this, we might as well have a sit just a a a bathroom. For the residents to use when they're out there, and his bathroom be close to people who are in his business only. Uh, I mean, he's being nice enough to let people come in and out and use the bathroom, but we do have a bathroom out there. And that should be for just the guys playing ball, uh, whatever, that's got nothing to do with Elite Sports. Because he should not be responsible for that water bill if recreation is using it also. Because you never know how that's going, what's going to happen. That's just fair. That's only common sense.
Thank you.
Council chair, you there is a motion.
Okay, I mean, we could vote on it, but add on the agenda either way, so. Okay, let's go ahead and take the uh, let's go ahead and take this to vote to add on the agenda at the next city council meeting.
You're being in uh, you're not being reasonable to the council, the Corporation Council, given them.
He said, he said more than two weeks, right?
All favor for adding it on the next city council meeting, please state aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion passed.
I I understand. I will also, I will research it, uh, include also the sprinkler system that was illegally obtained. The water leak. I'm just gonna say, when I do my work, I did meet with Mr. Mackey. I I am impressed. I asked him to.
That's not, that's not.
Documentation, which we will. He has produced it to us. We've uh requested some information from his attorney, so all of it will.
Either way, give us an update. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're done with this one. Go ahead.
You remember, I did ask for extra.
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
How much time?
Four minutes.
Four minutes?
I just want to second what Ray said. It was given not just. It was given to.
One second. I I wanna start so I can get the the clock right. I'm gonna start at one minute, and then I'll reset it for three as you go along.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
I want just to second what he said. The city council approved not just Elite Sport, they uh approved another entity. Uh, who was basically managing the golf course. The abatement was given to more than one company, okay? I have a question for the mayor. In his deposition. In the case of Joe Hashem against the city and against the mayor. He stated.
Objection, I'm I'm objecting to any hearsay statements.
No, 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 I have it on my phone.
We are not gonna get into your accusation.
That is not okay. And Roger, I need both of you guys, one second. Please no interruptions. When you interrupt each other, everybody starts talking over each other, and nothing happens. If you'd like to speak, just, he's asking for no accusations, if I'm not mistaken.
So what what I'm trying to head off is any.
One second.
Any statements put on a record with his pending litigation? And that's what he's actually quoting from, which we don't have in front of us. He can go through a FOIA request, I get what a deposition he needs.
On my phone.
But at the same time, at the same time, Roger. At the same time, Roger, just be fair, calm down, because I'm all for freedom of speech. If he's quoting something. With Tablah, please. No, 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 no.
And then he then is the mayor has got to respond. That's a common thing on the case of the litigation. I don't know what he's gonna say.
I respect that. I respect that. In the same, in the same moment. But wait, let let's finish first something. In the same moment, if as a resident, he makes any statement he wants. So long as he's not a part of the body, whether it's the council or the administration, it's as discretion. If you're saying, Roger, please, if you're saying he's speaking in regards to a particular lawsuit, I totally respect. We can't speak about it. I get that. It neither can administration. But if a resident wants to speak about something, what he's quoting, it's up to him. Now then, at that point, anybody from administration has a right. To retort, or they could say nothing because there's a lawsuit. That's at their discretion.
Now you're asking the mayor to comment on that.
Okay, nobody from the audience, please. Okay, but let's pretend, but let's pretend the lawyer's.
Roger, I will put it on Facebook for you and him and for the public to see.
Okay, one second.
So here you gotta stop, please.
One second. One second, one second, I got this. Roger, even even if uh even if somebody else's attorney set them come and say this. It's at his discretion to say, it's at your or the mayor's discretion, either answer or not answer.
I had it to him.
There's no court orders ordering that information to be released. So if you're asking him to comment on that, you're interfering with the litigation.
I should say no. Roger.
Say whatever he wants to say, but he's not gonna hold a deposition which we don't have in front of us.
Roger.
Respectfully disagree.
Yeah.
Roger, with my respect to you, I'm going to put the deposition online. For the whole city to see how many times. I am responsible for what I'm saying, and I promise this city, I will put the deposition and show what he said about me.
Okay.
I I challenge him to tell this city that I asked him for a favor, for money, for. I challenge him to tell this city that I asked him for a favor, for money, for appointment or anything. I challenge him. Anyway, thank you and I'm sorry. I apologize to the public, the resident and everybody and to the mayor that I raised my voice. On December twenty second, twenty twenty, there was a city council meeting where Joe Hashim submitted. Bid for three bidders for demolishing some houses in the city. Uh the council decided, including the mayor when he was on the city council. Uh seventeen minutes into the meeting, he decided to choose the second highest, not the lowest. Second highest bidder because they didn't have, the the lowest bidder didn't have certificate. From the state that they are qualified to demolish and to deal with asbestos. He led the opposition and basically they took the second highest, not the lowest. And now I ask. Why wasn't any study done at the golf course for asbestos, if we have any asbestos, if we have anything there? I ask freedom of information request, now no response. I sent it yesterday again. So I wanna see. Now for Mariana, she signs all the bills which comes from Revive Golf Management. Hundred and twenty one thousand dollars a month for labor. Does she have any backup to see how many hours they work? If those people are on payroll, if any, or those people are certified to do the job they done. Who received the equipment? Who looked at the payment which Revive Golf Management is doing? We don't know except one piece of paper I obtained the truth FOIA. Just one page, hundred twenty one thousand plus plus plus. Nobody qualified in the city, received the equipment to see if they are second hand or third hand or they are brand new. Nobody looked to see if bids were done to to get the fair prices. We spent three point two million dollars so far against your resolution. Which you stated that you wanna spend only two point five seven million. You are above and beyond what you voted for. Wake up, look at what you signed for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alhak. Next up, city street name, please.
Has Baydune, Ardmore Street, Dearborn Heights. I'm also the vice president of the Crestwood School Board. As I was witnessing the meeting, I know we were talking about uh Little Joey and some things that happened in regards to safety and paint. I'm here from the Crestwood School Board to put my hand out to see what we can do together to make our city and schools safer. We have a great, great body of trustees right now. I'm sure that if the paint can't be bought by the city. Or we do need help from city workers or whatever, we can do it together. City Council meeting, or I'm sorry, a school board meeting, of course, I invite the mayor and the administration and all of you to come. That if we do need funding, we could figure out a way to raise the money for the paint, not only for the Crestwood side. But I think we can give some great ideas for the Annapolis side as well.
Just yeah, I want you to know, put that aside, we'll get it donated tomorrow.
We'll get it donated tomorrow.
I don't know. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Hassan. Anybody else with uh and uh by the way, I see online, Ash, I I do see you, I do recognize you. We'll be going to uh Zoom next as soon as the public comments are done in the audience, because usually I go to Zoom first, but this time I switched it, but. Ready?
Soon as he gets, starts talking, soon as he says his name, I started after that.
Uh Gary Myatki Plainfield uh Street, Dearborn Heights. Uh democracy dies in darkness. We have a real question here, a real problem with transparency. The Corporation Council does not dictate whether or not something can end up being said by members of the public. The Corporation Council has no such authority. The United States Constitution does not grant him any such authority. And Council Chair, I applaud you for upholding the principles of the First Amendment and recognizing that. People are free to say what they have to say. Corporation Council can protect the city by saying. You shouldn't end up commenting on that issue. But let's continue about transparency. We've ended up hearing some things about the E Course Creek. Frankly, one of the biggest issues, if not the biggest issue facing this city. And I think it's really problematic when we're hearing that the county said something. There is a consent judgment against Wayne County that the city has had. That I negotiated on behalf of the city years ago that obligates the county to end up doing certain things. The county does not dictate what is to be done. The mayor does not dictate what the city will do. The city council has the authority and should take the initiative to push these issues forward. If you want to learn more about some of these issues, then I would be willing to provide you information at no charge. But you can potentially do these things either one. By waiving privilege, which might not be a good idea, and you should discuss these things with your council. Or two, as a resident, you could invite me into a closed session and I could tell you all about some things. That I know with respect to this issue and I would be glad to do so. Next issue with regard to this. By the way, in terms of being a closed session. Under the Open Meetings Act, if there is actual pending litigation, not threatened litigation. Not a case, actual pending litigation, you can go into a closed session. Hopefully, everyone understands what I'm referring to when I say that. Next issue, kind of related here. Mister, I believe his name is Ayun, if that's the correct way to end up saying his name. I had a client named Aoun and that's the way we pronounced it. But this um this gentleman basically said at a meeting. That there were discussions in a closed session about Mister Mackey. Now it appears that that has been verified. Uh that sounds like it was totally inappropriate and Council Chair, if I could have just a.
Fifteen more seconds.
That's fine. So if there was this discussion, then this is a real problem in terms of transparency. Finally, in terms of Act Seventy Eight and civil service, it is a transparent and open process. This is not a minor issue. This is a critical issue to avoid favoritism, preferential treatment and potentially corruption. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Um Council, Council Chair. Just just a short response. The the officers that were sworn in today were from a list certified by Act Seventy Eight. So Act Seventy Eight was not avoided in doing that. Also, there's, we are not down thirty one police officers. That was mentioned.
Okay, thank you, Corporation Councils. City street name, please.
Uh Pam Sorbo, Kenmore Street, Dearborn Heights. Question, so if we do a grassroots to help with the school situation. For the painting, the roads, the school signs and everything else, and we do it without authorization from the mayor, will we be charged with vandalism? Can we do it at the city?
I'm not an attorney, I'm let the attorney handle it. I believe without authorization, you possibly could, but the attorney can better answer that.
Ma'am, I I would suggest you put in writing what your request is. If you're asking us to okay something, I can't give you legal advice.
I know that right here, probably a hundred people that would volunteer to help, so with the schools that we have in Dearborn Heights. We could pretty much get a lot of it pumped out within a couple of days, school zones, paintings, things like that, that wouldn't. Put a drain on the city and people would volunteer to help out. I pretty much guarantee it. We could put it on Facebook and I'm pretty sure the community would come and droves. It happened at Riverside when we had to put the gate up between Warren Valley and Riverside. I was the one that headed up that gate so that the parents could pick up. We'll do it again so that the kids are safe and we can put paint down ourselves. We know how to paint.
I would suggest just send an email to the chief of police and we'll get you an answer. He's very receptive. I would join if it's.
Will that be good? You can? Alright, we got someone to put that up. Alright, so we can do that. You'd be you'd be willing to help? Will council help?
Council of Mods ready buying the paint.
Alright, so we'll try to get this as fast as possible. We'll put something up on Facebook, contact people.
It's coming out, it's coming out of the money that Moby Doom collects at an ice cream bar.
We could do a go funding for it. So it sounds like the money's there, we just need the people and that's what Dearborn Heights is supposed to be, a nice community that helps out, so let's get it done.
I think maybe if we can get the um the rules and how how many feet from the curb we paint lines. And make that as legal as, I mean, we gotta make it. Okay, correct.
Anybody else in the audience, because I might go to Zoom. Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Uh wait, the gentleman was before you, Tom. Alright, come on up, sir. Uh this gentleman asked for an extra minute. Yeah, please, thank you. Must be the tree.
No, it's not a tree.
How many minutes is it? Go ahead, sir.
Okay. My name's Ron Frenzy, live on Fairwood in Dearborn Heights and just have two two ideas here. Uh about a year and a half ago, I I gave out a article from the Wall Street Journal about. Facebook knows Instagram is toxic for teen girls and it had to do with Instagram talking, encouraging girls. You know, to be depressed and have anxiety, also have eating disorders. Now, there's a new article that just came up just a couple of weeks ago, which which you have now. It's so over the top, so horrendous. If I talked about it, I would probably be stopped. So yeah, so my concern is if if all the members could read it and then make ten, twenty or thirty copies for parents. Because they may think twice about what's going on on Instagram for their kids.
It might be a good idea to give a copy to the trustee, it's too trusty. I've been taking a photo of it, so I'm gonna make sure I read it tonight.
Yeah, it's 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 really over the top what's going on and I'm sure parents don't know about it. Uh the second thing is, uh what what's one way to have cars slow around schools? Well, no one's mentioned ever about what's called rumble strips. So the rumble strips are, like when you're on I seventy five and you doze off and you go over into the shoulder, you make that. Speed bumps, yeah, but they're really tiny, so they're like grooves in the road. So I think that would be good too, if you had those around all the schools. And then maybe the third thing is, there's something called Ackman's razor. It's an old saying, did you ever hear that? It it's like, what it means is the simplest, easiest, see, simplest, easiest thing to do to solve a problem is used to the best. So what I'm talking about is at two thirty, all the cars are around the high school, how to how to just miraculously get rid of them. Especially in Green Lawn parking lot where there's, people can be hit. Or on, there there's a small parking lot just south of a Canfield Center, that there's just lots of cars in there. All the principal has to do is tell all the kids next year to park in Canfield Lot. Canfield Lot has got seventy open spaces and around two thirty, there's generally about two, there's generally about ten people. That occupy the spaces. Behind the lot is a is a circle and there's another twenty or thirty. So so we're looking at maybe about ninety empty spaces to solve a problem that's maybe uh twenty five, thirty cars. So it it it's an easy thing. Like I says, the the easiest thing, you just tell the principal to announce this is where you're parked. I'm sure the 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 principal tells now where the teachers should park, where the students should park, but not anything about where they should be picked up.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ron.
Good afternoon, Mariana Hernandez, North Boneyet Street, Chief of Staff. I'm speaking as the Chief of Staff.
Three minutes still?
And all I wanna say right now is welcome to the city of Dearborn Heights and any city government. There are too many issues, too little money, too little time. Um all of the issues that you have mentioned today, um from Act Seventy Eight. Public meetings are available, anyone can attend. That list is always certified there. Um food trucks, trees, bids, uh the controller, the budget, there are so many issues. And for the administration, it is honestly very hard to understand what you as a body want us to focus on, because it changes every day. Even with the council, with the budget, you kept giving us ideas as individuals, but never as a body. So my recommendation would be that you start working as a body. Pick three things that you want us to focus on. And give us six months or whatever you want, but you can't just keep asking for different things every five seconds. I also highly recommend that you go back to Open Meetings Act training, now that we have the M M L um renewal available. I encourage you to go to those M M L trainings. There are certified classes that teach you how to do budget processing. That teach you how to write ordinances, that teach you what you have to do as elected officials to help your residents. Um this isn't a one person job. Um I feel accused by multiple people because I did my job. My job by the council was to bring issues to your attention when people were late on fees, when there were legal issues. And I did so. It is not my job to make the decisions as to what to do after I bring these issues to your attention. It is yours. Um so with regards to that, I I apologize for any delays that any business members or partners have felt. It is not my place to make that decision. With regards to uh the streets, again, I was giving instruction again today to to work again on on. What do you want us to do, right? We're doing an extensive traffic study with the uh T I A and our engineer and our police department. But if you want us to just do a simple, small solution, which is just painting, sure, we can do that. But that is not a comprehensive solution. That is not the recommendation of the engineers. But if that's what you want, sure, give us instructions to do that, but be specific of what you want. You know, you can't just say like, do it, give me an update for all of them. You you have to be more specific.
Mariana, I just wanna call you off. I think I asked you for an update to painting the the.
So you, as the Moby do want, or if that's what the body. Again, I don't know if that's. The body as a whole. And that's the same issue we had with the budget. We hear from one council member. But that doesn't give us instruction as the administration as to what does the council as a body.
Mariana, I want you to know, the council of the body, the administration, the police chief, everybody has requested to have these things painted and we were told that they're on back order. Alright, so I want you to be, from your body, want them. It's not, it's not, and to be honest with you, it's insulting because I know it's the statement was that I asked you, can you give us an update on what you could potentially do? I didn't demand you to do something. I said, can you put, can you give us an update and tomorrow and how we can get this to be done? That's what I requested. And I'm gonna tell you, Mariana, I'm honestly insulted by how you're speaking to us. All we are asking for is progress and I've said this a million times, it's kitchen sink stuff. So, for example, I mean, I don't wanna bring this up, but you brought this up, the stuff with the schools. Once we see kitchen table stuff, like things moving, painting, somebody's painting, I mean, Ali Deep and the Chiefs said they've taken this on. This was eight, nine months ago. I don't wanna talk about this, but now you're bringing me. No, I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna talk. I know, but I've got, but you represent, you came up to represent administration saying basically we're idiots. We're not.
No, I came to.
No progress on this. I have not seen anybody come back to us and say, this is what we're gonna do. All we're asking for is progress. No residents should put up with the bullshit of no painting of streets.
Point of order. Number one, I think you should direct paint issue to the D P W director. That's his job. You're always interrupting sometimes. Okay, let him. Councilman, please.
Okay.
I have three seconds left, can I just finish?
And then I'm gonna speak on that.
Uh, again, this is a clear example of what I'm trying to say, we need to be better. We need to behave better in this meetings, this is not okay. I'm just recommending that you use the tools that are available to you to to get better understanding on how to move forward.
Council chair.
Okay, Councilman Muscat first, please don't talk over each other. We as a body wanted this done, we asked to get the paint to be done. It's the D P W's dire- director's job to get this paint. Now, it's up to the administration, don't tell them, get the paint. And if they did, then the D P W di- director has failed us. And and I don't wanna talk bad about directors, but this, this is paint, paint. Okay, I know it's a special paint that goes on the ground, but the county a- and the state puts it out there all the time, I'm watching them strike strike ninety-four when they redo a ninety-four out in Jackson, that's the state, they're getting paint from someplace, okay? So it's up to the D P W director, and I think the administration should immediately tomorrow morning, call him up and say, where's the paint? Okay, where's the damn paint? So a- a- and and that's the bottom line, we have to hold them responsible for doing their jobs. We can't tell them what to do, all we can do as a body allocate some money for the paint. So
Talking for the audience, please.
So that's where I'm getting at, so let's find out where the paint is, so we can buy the paint. D P W does have a budget, they got road budget, and there's money in that road budget. And the paint is can't possibly be that expensive and have it striped, thank you. And I'm agreeing with Councilman DeDoo.
I just wanna say for the record, I I was, I'm and no means, when I asked Mariana to please give us an update, was I directing her to do anything, because I'm not, at the end of the day, I am not your boss. I am not asking you to do anything, but all I'm asking for is an update. Hey, and I, and what I said was, on the record, you can go back and watch, was please get in contact with D P W, give us an update, see what it's gonna take, I'm not telling you I want it done tomorrow. But I would love for it to be done, and people have been asking for it for eight months, but all I simply asked was, can you give us an update? You said no, you nodded your head, so I'm gonna, and 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 then you got up here and told me to take an M M R M class, well, let me tell you. I I'm very familiar with how to be operating over here, I was elected by the people at the end of the day, I don't need to be insulted. But but, hold on, Council Chair, look, all I simply asked was for D P, can you get in contact with D P W, give us an update, and when we're gonna get these things painted, yeah, the school year's over. So this paint is gonna be torn up by the by by the fall.
Okay, Councilman Amay.
Thank you, Council Chair, and like, I mean, like Councilman Do mentioned, we did request as a body, we did request those things to be painted. And like I said, Director Deep said that paint was on back order. I do wanna thank the Chief of Staff for uh her advice for us to go back to school. I would like to ask this council body, this honorable council body, maybe we can request as a body for her to send her back to school to learn how to address this council body.
No comments from the audience, please. Okay, Councilman Wensley, you're up next, are you speaking as a councilman or as a resident?
Well, I I guess I'm speaking as a councilman, that that uh that live at uh on Two Lane Street in Dearborn Heights. Um, as Ms. King uh asked, you know, she, she, we've been told things are in progress and and in motion. And, you know, what's what is, what's going on, what's the update, that's what we keep on getting, things are happening, but nothing's, uh, it's obvious, nothing's happening. And since when do we have to ask to have the street street swipe, striped around the schools? That's a every year occurrence, it's, it goes on every, we shouldn't have to ask for it. Like a special thing, oh, you, we didn't know you wanted them striped, sorry, you know? You know, it's something that happens every year for years and years, as long as I lived in Dearborn Heights, we shouldn't have to ask for it. And you, um, you know, we we've got all kinds of issues, actually, as she said, we do have a lot of issues, and it's too bad, because we've had more issues in the last couple of years than I've ever experienced in my whole lifetime, sixty-six years at Dearborn Heights, and it's unbelievable, it's blowing my mind how much bullcrap is going on with the city, all the problems we're having, not just one, not just two, but dozens and dozens, everywhere you turn is a problem. You know, um, our ordinance department is, you know, I don't know what it's gonna take, it's it's gotta be revamped, they need more power, and we need more definitely need more guys, we we need the leadership in the ordinance department, to act immediately on things, not, you know, I'm working on it and I'm gonna issue a ticket next week, at the end of next week, sometime next week, I'll issue a ticket. If you get, if you know you're gonna get them a ticket, give them the darn ticket today, don't wait, and you were giving people too much time on this. There's a, there's a D T E poll over my neighbor's house, it's got two giant transformers on it. Last year I took a picture, it was leaning toward their house, it was right in the corner, this year it's like this. And I don't know who's responsible for that, it's on city property, our ordinance department should write D T and say, fix this thing immediately, or we're gonna find you. And lastly, in the last two days, I've been bombarded with thirty-seven texts, emails and messages on Facebook about the condition of the Warren Valley Golf Course Banquet Center. I've got over a hundred pictures here, and I don't know what's going on there, I'm not making any accusations at all. But these pictures are alarming, they show water stains on the ceilings, water coming down the walls. Uh, wood structures, it, I don't know if they're using the right proper wood, I'm asking the administration, just just because I wanna find out what's going on, I'm not saying anything's going on, hopefully everything's on up and up, and all the construction materials are being used and everything's good, because this isn't a a an issue about someone not liking someone, or, you know, someone not liking something that happened. It's a public safety issue, if there's bad construction, and I'm not saying there is, but if there is, and we have a fire in there, and the fire department comes in there and the ceiling falls on them, you know, you know, the the city's liable, I mean, we should have, I'm I'm asking the administration to direct the building department to put a temporary stop work order on that, so we can get the right inspectors in there. There's issues with, I've heard about not having the proper permits pulled, uh, you know, people that work work for the city are working, working on that, I mean, there there's so many things going on, and I just would like to clear all this up and say, hey, there's nothing wrong, let's do the right thing, put a stop work order on there, let's get the right inspectors in there, check it all out. Okay.
But but in retrospect, Councilman, I went to the building department myself, and I got copies of the permits with the proper trades from Eric Waitland, okay? So all it takes is to go in the office and find and ask them to give you the copies of the permits. Oh, you got it, that's, seriously, that, you you, we're beaten, we're beating up Warren Valley and beating it up and beating it up, and you come up here Well, I understand, but I've also Please, I've also been in the building and saw it with my two eyes.
What'd you see?
The whole thing was gutted, there was no water leaks like everybody was talking about months ago, it was all fixed. I've seen it with my own two eyes.
One sec.
You could also go
Ray, it hasn't rained in a month.
Councilman, Councilman, please, you always come up here and you beat up Warren Valley. You you do it all the time, and I'm tired of it, I'm tired of you beating up Warren Valley. Just asking you to please go to the Building Engineering Department the permits, instead of coming up here and saying that.
I, they can show me permits.
Also, go find them in the Building Engineering Department.
Okay, that's enough.
To do that.
Okay, Councilman Wensley.
Come on, go find
If there is an issue, turn those into the Building Department, if you feel more comfortable, more comfortable for transparency reasons, email them to the Building Department and include all us uh council members.
You brought it up last time, I guess, exactly what I did.
Enough on this subject.
Chair, I just want you to know, I want, Councilman Tom, so I want you to know something, I've actually golfed uh Warren Valley first week it opened, and it was raining, it was a little wet, I was like, man, what is this, I was actually a little disappointed. I've actually golfed it ten other times this season, and I swear to God, guys, I'm not making this up. It is absolutely amazing. The golf course I'm gonna tell you, is so well put together, so quickly, and what it looked like last year to what it is today. Let me tell you, guys, let let me tell you, well, hang on. And look, don't forget, it's a lot, it's a lot of land, guys, just hold on for a second. Look, you know, I and it seems like we're so quick, we wanna see it fail. No, we don't wanna see it fail, but at the end of the day, we own this, guys, hold on for a second, we own Warren Valley, right?
Thank you.
And I'm telling you guys right now, I don't know what it looks like inside, but I can tell you, the outside of the golf course, from the golf carts to the, to the car paths, to to the greens, to it looks so well, and I swear to God, I'm enjoying, I I played on Sunday. One hole that's a little, you know.
Council Chair.
I took a tour with with You know, walking in and out, I swear to you, the facility looks good, man.
I never said anything bad about the golf course.
Just turn it into the Building Department.
I will, but I'm saying, you know, people are putting words in my mouth, I'm not saying anything about the golf course, the golf course, I took a tour of it. It looks, it looks great, it's gonna, it it might take a whole season to grow in and everything, all the all the excavating they had to do, but I mean, you 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 put three million dollars into a golf course, a city money, it better look good, I'll tell you.
Okay. Okay, let me ask you a question, you toured, you toured, you toured just walking into the the golf shop, how does that look? Be honest with me.
It looks good.
It looks amazing. It looks, it looks really good. I'm not saying, I'm not saying nothing.
Speaking, you got three minutes, are you speaking as a councilman or as a resident?
I'm speaking as a resident, Ray Muscat, Havelock Street.
Okay.
Uh, we keep beating up this, we keep beating this to a, uh, uh, hang on, my phone is right there, just hit start. Down at the bottom. So, we keep beating this up, yes, we did put a lot of money into the golf course, but as, after speaking to a lot of golfers, okay, one who was very skeptical of the golf course, that works at a local business here, kept asking me, goes, I'm not too sure, I said, go play it and make up your own mind. I seen him again a few weeks later, he said, I played the course. And I'll, if I have to rate it between one and ten, it's a ten. Okay, this is the best this golf course has been in years and years and years. People always wanna say how great this golf course was, this golf course was junk for thirty-five, forty years. And and according to golfers, according to real golfers, like I asked my son, who's a, who's a scratch golfer, do you want, come on and play Warren Valley, he goes, why the heck would I wanna play at that hole? Okay, why would I wanna go play that crappy go- golf course? That's what real golfers tell you, that's why Warren Valley was never even put in a free press as a golf course to see. And all you have to do is look at the golf report at the beginning of the year, Warren Valley hasn't been mentioned in twenty-five years.
Right.
Okay, come on, face the reality, and and the golf course itself looks fabulous. The inside of the place, it's gutted, they're working on it, they're doing the best job that they probably can do. And all you have to do, Councilman, is go and pull the permits yourself, because when you mentioned it and somebody else mentioned it to me, first thing I did was I was at the Building Engineering Department, looking for those permits and seeing the Harlan Electric Companies, that people say, well, we weren't using qualified electricians, and it was Harlan Electric. Now, you find a better one than that, I dare you, okay, and you sit there and laugh about it.
No, you can, they can give you any permit, how do you know they're not doing work that they don't even know about that, and not permitted?
Oh, you know, how how much work did you do? Course all the time, and it's our golf course. And I'm sick and tired of people
Well, it's not ours, can you go in there and do anything you want to it?
Were you able to do it?
We could, yeah.
What you wanted to do?
This is not a back and forth.
He's making a comment that we can't go in there and do what we want, we weren't able to do it when
Hello, sorry, it's a hard act to follow. Uh, very excited to catch me, um, just a quick um comment, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but we're going with it. Um, so first, just wanna thank you all um for sharing your perspective, and I wanna recognize that, um, you know, holding elected office is no easy feat, Mayor Bazey, the council members, um clerk. Um, and so I wanna thank you for your for your hard work and for your effort and for your diligence and making sure, you know, the city is the best that it can be. Um, I did just wanna say that, I know there was a point mentioned earlier about limited resources um, being an important consideration when it comes to effectively serving and meeting the needs of our residents. Um, and while it is true that governments operate within certain constraints, time, resources, money, um, I just wanna say, as a young person, it's really important to me to mention that this shouldn't serve as a barrier to our collective commitment to addressing community needs. It's a cru- it's crucial to challenge the perception of government as a secondary option or a place to send your B team. Despite limited resources, there is an obligation to meet the moment, to think innovatively and to maximize efficiency, to meet community needs. The answer isn't a ta- tax and vilification, the answer is collaboration, partnership, the answer is meeting the moment as it comes to you. There are tons of issues wr- uh wrong with the city, that doesn't mean we hunker down and, you know, refu- refuse to stand up and meet the moment, that's all, thank you.
Just a quick, Tom, I'd like to commend Zainab Ba, she was uh Arab Student Union President at Fortson High School, and she's been a community activist eighteen years old throughout the community, so last Not nineteen, yeah? I'm talking about when you were eighteen, not now. Seventeen, sixteen and fifteen and eighteen years old, she was doing stuff that was that typically thirty and forty-year-olds can barely do, so I commend you for all your activism, and you've always been under the radar. Nobody knows what you're doing, but I commend you and any other young members that work for the betterment of the community, so God bless you.
She's a recipient for the N D A, for the University of Michigan, but go green, go white.
That's right, you have, anybody else in the audience without, okay, I'm gonna, if you don't mind, please Ash Othman waiting for a while, I'm gonna let her to go on, then I'm gonna go back to the audience, I'll go back to memory. Ash, uh, you can go ahead, please, you have three minutes, please state your name, city, street.
Hi, my name is Ash Othman, uh Rochelle Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I, first of all, like to thank the director, I believe her name is Kim, for with Parks and Recs, for the amazing uh summer festival that we did have. I do also wanna thank the police that were there that helped keep all of us residents safe, especially when it came to nighttime and any physical altercations or anything that was happening. I also wanna thank the library director for everything that he is doing, my daughter loves the summer programs and she loves the boxes that we receive, so thank you for that. Also, I'm very disappointed in the city council meeting, um, I think everybody needs to work as a team, I'm not just saying city council, I'm saying everybody. The way everybody's interrupting each other, speaking above each other, as residents, we don't wanna see that, we wanna see everybody working together. We don't wanna see anybody interrupting each other, yelling at each other, I was just very disappointed in this meeting as my seven-year-old daughter watches this meeting with me, and it's not something I allowed her to finish watching, and I I did not appreciate the way that this, the Chief of Staff was spoken to. As a female, I don't feel like anybody should ever speak to another female like that, especially from a man's perspective, I do feel like not, instead of everybody interrupting and everybody, just, hey, say your, say what you wanna say, but in a different tone. Let's not all attack, and then everybody interrupting everybody, it's not, it shouldn't be so, from what I see, the Chief of Staff works very hard with everything that she does, and if there's something that, hey, that's not liked or something, you know, reach out to her on the side. But I just did not like how that was handled, and I don't like the way that this meeting was ran. We shouldn't, as city council members, nobody should be yelling at each other, we just witnessed our own city council members yelling at each other, it shouldn't be, work as a team. You guys, we can make so much more better changes, working as a team with our administration, with our Chief of Staff, with our city council, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Come on up, yes, come on up, you're next, and then Tim will be getting you next.
Good evening, my name is Ned Apigian, and I live on Rosetta Street.
Dearborn Heights. I have to say this, dearborn Heights.
There are times they come here and they complain about the trees and
Bless you.
bless you, our ordinances, but I have a basic question. When we come here and we point a discrepancy, what's done about it? Does the administration mark it down and send the appropriate ordinance person? The last time I came here, I told you, there are fifty percent of the fences in this city are wrong. They're against the ordinance. You could say some of them are old. How come new ones are popping up? I pointed out that there are fences in front yards being built now. It's not allowed, isn't it? Now, the other thing is we need to do something about trees. There are people that trim trees. I know they're trimming them. The city's not going there. And they're mutilating trees, trimming a tree so the branches don't go over a street. A typical bridge is seventeen feet, not fifty and sixty feet, cutting up. That's not a tree, a telephone pole with an umbrella on top. So I pointed that out. Right now, I wanna talk about something more important that deals with me personally. On Rosetta Street, as it comes to Ford Road, presently, the traffic has been backed up because the curbs are being adjusted for handicap, wheelchairs being able to go down. That subdivision was completely repaved in two phases, five, six, seven, how many years ago? And Ford Road is a state road, and that was paved recently. But the apron between Ford Road and the subdivision is a mess. If you look at the taxes that people pay in that subdivision, they average eleven and twelve thousand dollars. And now it's campaigning and people complain to me about their taxes. They gotta go through that track to get into the subdivision is terrible. Not for the kind of money they gotta pay. So what do we do about this? The approach on Warren to enter that subdivision was taken care of by the contractor that did the half of the subdivision. It is clear that when we talk about things that are being done, we're building things in the city right away. In the mailbox, the to the manor house that uh there's no manor house. We're building these brick monstrosities that I hope nobody hits them and gets concerned. You know, the little room that we have meetings in with the lawyers, that's where you're gonna be. If anybody gets killed or hurt, hitting those things because you're gonna pay. Those things were built without permits, and it's going to be a gigantic problem for you.
Anybody else in the audience? All right, we're gonna go to the two people on Zoom, and hopefully that should end our meeting. Next up is Tim Emery. Go ahead, please. He's muted.
Live, not memorics. Age that one. Okay, uh, when you talk about paying the roads.
I'm I'm sorry, Tim.
Tim Emery, Eaton, Dearborn Heights. When you use the paint, make sure it's a non-slip paint. Uh, cuz if you don't use the wrong kind of paint, we're gonna have other problems. Uh, but and also, don't forget Westwood. I mean, I heard everybody talk about Crestwood, talk about D seven, but we have this other fantastic school district in this city. And uh, don't forget about us. Cuz we're the Bulldogs. But uh, it also, guys, man, what it it it, the meeting tonight was sad. Dave, you gotta use that gavel. I'm sorry, you gotta use that gavel. I mean, because it got out of hand, completely out of hand. It made me sad. I mean, we're we're, respect each other. We got a great city, got a great city council. Man, just, I don't wanna see that again. Good night.
Next up is Omar Mendez. Please unmute.
Omar Mendez, Cherry Hill uh Street here, Dearborn Heights. Um, first of all, I just wanted to go ahead and applaud Ash for bringing that up. And then secondly, I just wanted to also express my concerns. Cuz I was extremely disturbed the way that Mariana was spoken to. She was interrupted. There was profanity used. Everyone else is permitted to speak in a lot of the time, and the council advocates for those who are speaking, right? And advocates for people's freedom of speech. So I don't understand why that doesn't apply to female employees. Roberts Rules of Order, because this is chaos.
Thank you, sir. Next up is, let's not, let's not comment. We don't have to comment every single thing. Uh, next up is Mike. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
How you doing tonight?
Hey, Mike.
Mike Blackburn.
You muted yourself, Mike.
I'm just here to op- op for a little um historical.
Wait, is this Mike Blackburn? Are you speaking as a city employee or as a resident, please?
Um, probably a little bit of both.
Well, I know, but you gotta pick one or the other, because anything you say as an employee obviously would be the city administration speaking. So I need to know which one you wanna speak as, either one.
Okay, I will speak as an employee.
Okay.
As a twenty nine year employee, and I'm only gonna give um historical context to this. I'm not offering any op- opinion with this at all. When it comes to the paint striping on the roads, last year, we were not able to secure paint. As the state roads and county roads were done, that is true. The biggest, I have a friend that has a friend that works for one of those companies. The biggest company bought up fifty thousand gallons of the striping paint, and we were not able to purchase any. So that's why they didn't get done last year. Um, when you do, when you stripe an intersection, you cannot stripe all four corners of an intersection at once because cars would not be able to tra- go through the intersections. The East and West Road and the North and South Road, you have to do either the eastbound or the westbound, then the northbound or the southbound. You have to wait for it to dry, then you have to switch. So you usually, when you do one intersection, you go down, you do one side, east and west, one side, north and south, then you go down, you do another one. And you end, you you end up coming back and you end up getting getting the the other sides. So it takes a little bit of time cuz there is tre- travel time in there. And also, um, typically, the city never started it till after school gets out because it gets in the way of the buses. And that is a major concern, whether it's where stripe, you're striping where a bus stop is or something else. It's usually not, it's usually not done until after school gets out is usually the process that the city has done forever is they waited till after school was out. And if you read the paint, the the striping paint, at nighttime, if it gets below fif- they say you don't wanna do exterior paint when it's below fifty degrees. So if it's gonna get below fifty degrees at night, it's not a good time to do it. You want nice hot days. So the paint bakes into the um, the cement itself. So it is on the radar. Um, striping paint is hard to find. And it's it's been, it's been worked on. Trust me, it's been worked on. And last fall, when Councilman um Wensel said that he was able to find some that was oil-based paint. And maybe Councilman Muscat would know this, maybe somebody else will. You cannot put oil-based paint down on the ground in November. It just not going to work. It'll never dry. To say that, I hear that things are not being done. It's timing. Um, I just wish some.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Anybody else on Zoom? Anybody else in the audience? Move to a adjourn, move to adjourn. By Councilman Ahmad, any discussion on that? You're none of my favor. Please state aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.